All right, is now thirty. This is the March first meeting of the planning board. I'm Jeff Brand. I'm the acting chair. Present tonight, Donna Masucci. Board member Ron Allard, ex officio. And I guess, are you, are you still ex officio?
Yes, till, till next Tuesday.
Okay. Andrew Knapp. Remotely, we have Steve Diamond. We also have present the code enforcement officer, John Hawkins, administrative assistant for Planning and Land Use Office, Barbara Irvine, town administrator and techie extraordinaire Connor McIver. And we also have remotely our planning as, our contract planner, Carol Ogilvy. So. First order of business is approval February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Do any of the members have any comments on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February fifteenth.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Knapp, seconded by Ron Allard, to approve the minutes. I'll do a roll call. Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Ron Allen.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
I'm a die.
I'm a die, Brand, I. Okay, then unanimously we have approved. All right, the next order of business is a request by an applicant for a design review for a proposal for four one-bedroom and one two-bedroom residential units to the north of the lot. And proposing a single commercial building for by one hundred and twenty. It is continued, they've.
Their proposal didn't comply with our zoning ordinance.
Well.
Pointed out to them, they wanted to continue so they could try to do something different.
Okay. So they've requested continuance, but they're not here to do so? Did they submit a letter or a yell? Okay. I, in, they said it didn't meet zoning ordinance. I'll point out that as part, while we're discussing this, as part of a designer, if you go back to the requirements in the regulations for a design, it's not, it's more than just addressing the issue of town center, that it, explanation for how it would be with it, it used to be a P E D. But also just the designer has to have a completed site and application checklist and set of plans as part of Article three, they were not submitted, single didn't meet requirements as a sheet in and of itself. So, you know, it. Forward on the design review, I would encourage you to look at the requirements of the design because the package that was announced.
That's fine.
Okay, all right, so you're here to ask for
Yeah, Scott Colville Associates. As always noted, we've kind of understand there may be some zoning, zoning issues, and we understand the application wasn't met. So we'd like to request continuance.
All right, and continuance to fifth. Okay. All right, then I'll entertain a motion for, now, with that said, doing, in working on the regulations, looking into subdivision, and also what's going to happen in the site review. At least within the subdivision, it's being incorporated in the site review. There are rules that say that documents for review by the board are submitted fifteen days prior to the meeting, which will be considered for new documentation, of which a majority is package. It also says that we should be setting the date by which we want to see the documents. They continue, and that should be part of the motion. So. I think if we want to make a motion here, in the motion, I understand this is not a, this is a site review. I'd have to go back and check the site review regulations. I don't know that they mirror the subdivision, but certainly, you know, I've discussed on several occasions, we need to ensure the documents get in, so we can post on the website. Or we can get them distributed, print them up to the members, so they have adequate time to review. So I would suggest that motion by what date documents be in, if fifth, that would be March twenty-first. Okay, March twenty-first. Is that achievable?
It depends on, we have not set up at this time yet with enforcement.
I. Okay, well, the, like I said, the current requirement of subdivision here is fifteen days, so. Okay, well, and we've been allowing, yeah, and, and, so that would be the fifteenth. We've been allowing people to submit documents up to the last minute, and I suggest that we not do that anymore to the board, because we don't have adequate time to get them. They need to be posted on the website, so the public can look at them also, so. So that's twenty-one days, the fifteenth is. It's, right, right, so. We have been, and, and Barbara's right, that we've been saying for, well, we're in a tweener. Because there's a lot of the documentation that's going to be submitted to us for the first time, because this is not an adequate application to begin with. So I think that we ought to at least allow ourselves the fifteen days that we normally be for new materials. If an applicant, even though an application is continued, if they come in and we say, we want a new drainage study, or we want a traffic study that doesn't exist, then the fifteen-day requirement would apply, because that's new documentation that's supplied. So.
Well, not a new, new design concept, this would require a variance from Z B A, right?
Maybe, depends on if they meet, they meet the zoning requirement, they wouldn't have to go to the Z B A, so.
But that would require a, a new design based on what they did.
Yeah.
Current design and concept, they need a Z B A variance.
They would, yeah, because it doesn't comply with.
So, well, right. The, in particular, the residential use, because it's not a P E D, and it doesn't, or it's, doesn't meet the A P E D.
Well, that, and does it, is there a hardship that the Z B A would have grounds to grant that?
Right, so, right.
There's multiple things there.
So, you're listening to this discussion, it's to go. I mean, we would need documents by the twenty-first. Do you think that's achievable based on what you're hearing?
Yes.
It is, okay. Then I would entertain a motion to continuous, continue this application to April fifth. All documents.
Make a motion, we continue two, three, four, dash, seven, seven, dash, T C, dash, twenty-two until April fifth, with documents being submitted by March twenty-first.
I second. So we have a motion made by Ron Allard, seconded by Jeff Brand, to continue this to all documents to be submitted by twenty-one March. All right, I'll do a roll call. Donna Masucci.
Sutti, aye.
Allen, aye.
Andy Knapp. Steve Diamond.
I'm a die.
And Jeff Brand, I, so unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Situation. Is the, the is the is the thousand one going to be continued? See that notes? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, what's that?
No, you're not.
My mistake.
Okay.
You're shaking, you said no.
No. Sorry.
You added.
I wrote it in the wrong place.
Okay, good. All right, the next item on the list is applicant for twelve, year. Just line plot twelve to county that uses the river. Yep. I've got one colored, so I'll show you something. Okay, so I guess at this time, we have we have Mr. Berry. I ask you just to give us the fifty thousand, then we will vote off to accept application and have discussed it.
All right, so for the record, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing probably the member of my family here this evening, with the exception of maybe my mom and dad. What we're proposing to do is the family farmhouse is here on the center of the screen on the twenty-three acre piece. Piece of property that was sold to my parents by my great-grandmother that went back to on this location here, that, and has now been transferred to and his wife, Tara, Tara's with me this evening. Is it I answering? And what they would like to do is remove this odd triangle shape at the back of the twenty-three acre lot and move the existing plot line over and incorporate that land mass into this building which we just built their house on. So I guess with that, I'd be happy to, is there any questions that you might have after acceptance of?
Okay, well, I guess the first order of business is actually to accept your request of waivers.
Yes.
So you have waivers, explain those three waivers.
Yep, to do it as, as possible, all three waivers pertain to showing existing features in some way, shape, or form on our plots. Just as was in the past, is we've shown all of the existing structures, applications of that nature, health condition of the parcel.
All right. So. Mr. Very interesting letter here. Requested a waiver on those three items, as you just discussed. This is, if you look at page two of the plans, the top graphic, wetland and dimensions, building setbacks are all described for those portions of the properties on which there are, are structures. And, and shows the wells, bleaching areas, and the, the Berry family cemetery. So. We have two separate waivers here to consider application. Does any of the board members have any questions about? Steve Diamond?
Yeah, so the, in the upper left of the screen that I'm looking at, that triangle that is being, that, that triangle is currently part of the main lot. I understand correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, that was almost like a wing onto the, on lot thirteen. Lot thirteen extended up, you can see the, the wall there. There's a line, there's a stone wall, and then if you look, it says boundary line to be abandoned, and that, that is what cordoned off that triangle up there along. So I right. Questions, Steve?
Yes, that's, that seems more reasonable than what it was before.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so if no one has questions concerning waivers, I, I will IPO, looking at plans for sufficient information provided on sheet two. Of what, top ground years and those that fell from the lots. I personally don't have a hold of that with anything. Okay. All right, well then, I would entertain a, a motion for, for this case number for the waiver for wetland identification. Take a motion to five, three, one, six, relating to topographic contours, because not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not compare to the spirit and intent of our regulations. Okay, motion by Andrew Knapp, seconded by Ron Allen. All right, I'll, the roll call vote on the motion. John Masucci. Ron Allen. Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
I'm a die.
Brand, I. Okay, so that waiver is granted unanimously. All right, entertain a motion, wait five point three point one, nine, that's being the wetland identification.
Take the motion to grant a waiver for five point three point five point three point one, parents nine, related to wetland identification on the struggle bus, right? Because not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver is not contrary to the spirit and intent of our regulations.
All right, roll call vote. Steve Diamond.
I'm a die.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Jeff Brand, I.
Ron Allen. Allen, aye.
Sutti, aye.
Sutti, aye, okay. Waiver All right, and the last waiver is for five, three, one, parents fifteen, relating to dimensional. So do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion. Grant a waiver for five point three point one, parents fifteen, related to dimensional requirements, specifically the building setbacks, because not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, granting waivers not contrary to the spirit and intent of our regulations.
I second. So, yeah, I know, that's what happened. All right, so we have a motion by Andrew Knapp, seconded by Jeff. Three, five, three, one, parent fifteen, dimension requirements, as it would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Drain waiver, spirit, and rules. So roll call vote. Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Ron Allen.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond.
I'm a die.
Brand, I, so the waiver is granted unanimously. All right, so that out of the way, unless anyone has any questions, I'll entertain, entertain a motion. As second the motion. Okay, motion made by Jeff. All right, roll call vote. Steve Diamond.
I'm a die.
Okay, Donna Masucci.
Checking it up. Sutti, aye.
I'm just keeping people away. And Brand, I, so the, the board unanimously.
Thank you.
So, even though I think this is simple enough, fifty thousand, but you covered everything. Is there anything else you would like to tell us about your application?
No.
Okay. Does the board have any further questions? Okay, then at this point, I will open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience, if you wish to say anything, then would you please come up and place, so that we state your name and address. If there's anyone online, raise your hand, and so that Barbara Irvine Connor McIver can see that you're trying to get in. If you're participating by phone, then star six to unmute your phone. All right, as okay. So. So as there's been, no comments, no objection. There's been no comment from online participants, phone participants, or from the audience here in the meeting, then I will close the public hearing. All right, at this point, we would allow a rebuttal from the applicant to any of the comments. However, I let you carry, say something, I see no need. All right. Any last comments or questions? Okay. Uh. Then I will entertain, well, we have here and then entertain a motion approved So, this is to inform you, the Berry Campaign Board, that it's March first, twenty twenty-two meeting, officially approved, application records above. Pressing conditions, all must be met by the applicant at the expense of prior plans being certified, by the plan certification of plans required prior commencement of a site work or reporting of any plans. Once these pressing conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note that if all pressing conditions are not completed within twelve calendar months to the day, which would be January, that would be, should be March first, March first, twenty twenty-three. The board's approval would be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreeable extension has been granted by the board. Would add the following now. So approval incorporates, we have number four here, incorporates the following waivers for the Berry subdivisions, which is three waivers that we green. Normally, that gets the note on the plan, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, so we would we would move the we would move number four up under number one. So then we see, add the following plan notes, this approval incorporates following waivers and Berry subdivision regulations, A, B, C, which is section five point three point one, parent six, parent nine, parent fifty. That, that change? Okay. Two, any outstanding fees shall be paid to the town. Three, prior to retaining board's signature, applicant shall submit three complete paper print, uh, plan sets and supporting documents, such as a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval, which shall include final and complete reports of all items submitted during the view for the town of Berry, it's filed, the chairman shall endorse three copies of the approved plans. Meeting conditions of approval, the town shall retain a sign in reproducible eleven by seventeen in a PDF format with supporting document from the town record. Those are the conditions precedent, generally subsequent conditions. The Appkinson's ownership certifying writing all approved that have been constructed as approved prior to the issuance of a Okay, so let's, right, so we'll scratch that.
That's that little disclaimer that has to
Yeah. When no active or substantial work required to prove was site within two years after date, plan assigned, the approved shall expire, and extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote of the board, so long as applied, where it's applied for at least thirty days prior to the expiration date, the board may grant on one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Acting substantial work defined in this section is being expensed at least twenty-five percent of interest. That's not applicable in this case either, right? So I'll scratch that sentence without objection. And the next sentence also, pertaining to infrastructure. All right, with that said, anybody have any Okay, then I will entertain a motion to uh, we can take out the vote, yes.
Realistically, do you even need the substantial work within two years since?
The only work here is such as pins, right?
You have to do that before you certify the plan.
Okay, right, which is under your pressing conditions with
You're saying.
So why do you have a
All right, so it's
You don't need to meet it?
Little note.
Yeah.
So under subsequent and general subsequent conditions, we can just scratch this and just put, and then done?
Sure.
All right. Okay, so that changed, I'll entertain a motion to for a notice of decision edited by the board.
Like a motion to approve two oh four, dash, twelve, and thirteen, dash, G R, dash, twenty-two, dash, L L. With the conditions as noted.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Andrew Knapp and Allard. Application, I'll do a roll call vote. Andrew Knapp. Ron Allen.
Allen, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Sutti, aye.
Steve Diamond.
I'm a die.
And Brand, I. All right, well, actually, good luck.
We have, we're still planning what we'll be doing in the next few months.
All right, the the next case is application two, ten, dash, one, dash, C R twenty-two. Pardon, noble fault, is the request by an applicant for three lot subdivision on lot one, and, well, with three lots being generated, varying acreage, so. Ah, you're skewed.
Kind of nice watching.
Pop.
You click on the link.
All right, so. It's One or two. Okay. Oh, yeah, I did see these emails. Hillary. That'll have to be, but. Just to. As you pointed out, I remember you guys.
You guys showing. Not binding.
It was discussion, have to discuss that further and see. So this is second time. Correct. Yep. So what we'll do is ask you. I will ask. Accept the application.
Scott Franco, special land consultants, also working on this project was Mark West, filling eight in the wetlands. Jeff heard of project engineering drainage. It's the same lot subdivision we proposed, we came to the design review on February first, three lots. The lots are all the same size, they didn't change any, just added the meat to the plans. The driveway design, some areas on the lots, I'll go through the lots again. Some air, some data to it. Lot one would be the first lot you come to as you come off one twenty-six. That's five acres, so three hundred and fifty-nine feet of frontage. And three acres free of hydrate A and. Lot one point zero be the next one on driveway. That is two point five nine acres with two hundred and one feet of frontage. And that has two point three eight acres of up and free of hydrate. And then the final lot at the end of the driveway is three zero seven acres, three hundred and six feet of frontage and two point nine eight acres of area free of hydrate A and B. So we incorporated the road agent comment and other things that we got at the, at the design review. The common driveway is sixteen feet wide with two foot shoulders. And then when it gets up to where we show the emergency turnaround half hammerhead layout, that goes down to twelve feet to the final lot. The swales are all line, stone lined, swales from the top down. It is proposed at a ten percent grade for a portion of the driveway, so we propose stone lined swales. Like I said, we provide that fire emergency turnaround in the middle of the second lot. That's, that's half of what the town's requirement for a hammerhead is. And we're also proposing a thirty foot wide right away across lots one and one point zero one, which is the, the easement for, for all the lots to access their lots. And then the drainage is the same as we discussed at, at the design review. Of course, we just added data and submitted a minor drainage report. So it's sixteen feet wide at the most with two foot shoulders and then roadside swales bringing it all down around to the entrance into a small detention area, a four bay and then into a detention area and then a multi-stage discharge, discharge structure, releasing the storm water out and I will enter to a culvert under six. All the culverts are at least fifteen inches size and they all adequate to handle the storm water.
Okay.
We did submit a road name. We got, from the list, we've submitted three options and we haven't heard back on the approval yet. We, the developer chose Falcon Ridge for the road name, but it hasn't been.
Falcon Ridge?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. All right, does the board have any questions? I entertain, except the application.
We did request two waivers too, and I'm not sure if one of them's higher top because I didn't find it in the subdivision, but I didn't want to be. Legends on each page.
Said that. Requested.
One was for legends on each sheet, I didn't find that in the subdivision regulations, but it's in the site plan regulations.
It is, it is, so this is a subdivision.
Right.
So. I don't think there is, I'm looking at it myself.
I, I searched it this afternoon, didn't find it, but.
I got a feeling you're right, it's not in there.
I, I believe, correct.
So therefore, that would not. I do not see a specific requirement of legends on each sheet. And a subdivision regulations. All right, so no waiver would be required for that, what was the other?
The second waiver is to allow for above ground electric for two hundred and fifty feet up the driveway and then go underground into the houses. Two fifth.
You gotta run up the whole, the whole driveway.
Right up to here and then they drop down and go to all the houses.
That's fine.
Two, turn to T eleven, going to sixty.
So it would go above overhead to this point and then it would run underground to this house. All, obviously underground all the way out to that one.
The whole bunch of ledge across the front, correct?
Yeah, I guess potentially there is, I mean, we didn't do, do the test pits right out front.
That was the rationale for this.
Yeah. To get up inside. We've got a lot of test pits within the property, but not right up near the front and they're afraid they're gonna have ledge.
I, I have that, did we get a written request for?
Yeah, I submitted it with.
You did.
And it's article, I got it as article fourteen, section fourteen point one. The ground.
Says shall be under. Power lines, telephone lines, ice and salons and everything, this is all underground. So in the site, oh, you're right, you're right, it doesn't, it talked about underground storage tanks, that's why I saw it. Okay. So you got a site plan waiver request for. No, it's actually, oh, he does.
And, and that's the only waiver unfortunately that I have right now.
Yeah, so it should be fourteen point one point one. Okay. I got it, I got it, I'm sorry, we missed. Okay, so. I'm sorry, we were looking stuff up, could you show us one more time what it is that you're asking?
So we go to overhead to this point and then drop down and the electric or the utilities would go under all the three lots. Get up out of the entrance.
Into basically the midpoint of the driveway. And why do you want to do that?
Because of potential ledge encountering at the, at the entrance of the property. Up in, up in the property, we have a lot of test pits, we hit big rocks, but we didn't hit any ledge.
So where would you, so you'd be placing a pole, is that?
The existing pole right now is, or I would assume that, and until EverSource or whoever signs off on it, the existing pole is right here, so I, what I envisioned, they would come in with a pole to there and then a pole over to here. Off this pole, they would run underground to this house. This first lot, and then on the second pole, they would drop down and run underground to these two lots.
If you had to run underground from that pole off the street, it would probably interfere with your drainage system too, correct? Because you'd have to come right across where that swell point is to bring the underground of the driveway.
Well, except if you look at it like the Dove Development, they've got underground utilities with drainage system and they buried the height of the underground materials to clear drainage system, so.
Well, I just don't know if it's all ledge and stuff in there, you might.
It's all ledge, that's another issue.
Because there's that, that big knob that comes up on top, I think that was all rock when I drove by, it looked like it was. But let's say, okay, let's say there is ledge there, why are you pressing the second pole? What seems to me the ledge would be from street pole to the first pole, not to the second pole.
I think it was based on whatever source, isn't there two fifty? They get three poles to two fifty, I think is what the way it is to save money, he was gonna use.
What I'm saying, from the street, you're running to that first pole.
Right.
You're putting another pole in.
Right.
I'm questioning the second pole.
And he's saying that it has to do with cost because they'll install the second pole, they'll go up to two hundred and fifty feet along that driveway.
That, that's what the developer was saying, telling me that EverSource will go in two hundred and fifty feet and then after that. It's on.
Aren't you asking for five hundred feet?
No.
Two fifty, okay.
Five hundred's the entire, roughly five fifty is the entire length.
If you could document that there is ledge, that'd be one thing. But personally, I would like to see as much buried utilities as possible. So I would like to know that it's not possible before saying yes to, to that.
I don't know if it matters, but it's all overhead, all the way down that road. It's not like it's a subdivision road with buried utilities going in a subdivision where they typically have that requirement for all the stuff to be underground.
You gotta start somewhere. And someday down the road, the Parker Mountain Road might have everything buried, who knows?
Well. I guess I wonder if there isn't kind, I will call it a middle position, but there's already the pole at the street. They're gonna have to come across. And they're gonna have to. Then, you know, you've got the driveway that's being put in there. I see the well that's there is a more reasonable, or is a reasonable proposal be from the pole to the first pole that's proposed and then run the underground along the driveways out to the, out to the lots?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's a reasonable compromise. What do you think, Steve? Okay.
There's reasonable justification to avoid ledge, but it seems to me on that first pole, the justification goes by pretty much cost.
And with respect to Mr. Knapp's concern about, you know, you've got the drainage system that you gotta put in, running utilities off the pole around the drainage system. That seems reasonable to allow the lines to traverse to the first pole, but after that, you're gonna be, you're putting in, if you look, you're gonna have to tear up the ground there for the extension for the first lot on the driveway, you're gonna have to be putting, you know, digging soils put into the driveway to the remainder of the development, so. Underground utilities on the remainder seem doable.
Yeah, I mean, all three, for the last two houses you have proposed don't have wires running in front of them. This change will make all three houses not have wires running in front of them. So I think benefit.
So what's the distance that you had proposed?
We had proposed two fifty, but it looks about one twenty-five.
About one twenty-five?
And one, say one twenty-five and one pole.
All right. So.
I mean, I'd give yourself.
This is one, one fifty.
Locate the pole, I believe, locate.
Right.
About to the first driveway.
Driveway is what, one twenty-five?
About that, and we could reference it as the first or something.
All right. All right, then I will, I will make a motion that. He does not, so we can, we can make that as. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then I make a motion to waive section fourteen point one point one underground utilities for application two sixteen dash one dash GR dash twenty-two, parents three for the first one hundred and fifty feet, beginning of the first driveway, whichever is, is created. Okay. Uh, yes, I was, I was kind of looking. As not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to, oh, as specific circumstances relative to subdivision or conditions of the land in such subdivision indicate that the waiver properly spirit intent of the waiver. All right, so we have a motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Donna Succi to approve the waiver. So I'll do a all vote, Steve Diamond. All right, Donna Masucci. Ron Allen. Bran I. Appi, so the waiver is granted unanimously. Okay. All right. So now we need to whether to accept the application as complete. Do I hear a motion?
That the application two one six dash one dash GR dash twenty-two, those three as complete. Second motion.
All right, we have a motion by Allen, seconded by Andy Knapp to accept the application as complete. So we'll roll call vote. Bran I, Donna Masucci.
Masucci I.
Ron Allen.
Allen I.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond I.
And Andrew Knapp.
Appi.
All right, and we have, you name accepted.
Thank you.
All right, we've done a design review and he's given us kind of the thousand. So at this point, are there further questions, are there other things you want to tell us that you haven't previously or, and or, or have questions?
I just got a few things and then I'd like to play that one video.
Sure.
We have subdivision. We do have, of course, just so it's on, on the record, we do have three permits, we need DES subdivision approval. We have to DES shoreline and Hampshire DOT highway access permit. There were comments, there was one comment that I saw that submitted about protecting the Isinglass. So we have to apply for shoreline protection, we're within fifty and we're within the, I think it's fifteen hundred foot buffer of the Isinglass. So it'll be reviewed by the Isinglass River.
Okay, seeing as you bring that up, that as the board listens to his discussion, there are three things that I could say that we might pay attention to while we're doing that. And that was one of them is that during the design review. And that was one of them is that during the design review, the board had a discussion as to whether we would send us the third part of the deal for the drainage system, which is a very simple drainage, one one soil. But in particular, because of the implications that the water from soil will drain to the culvert that goes under 126 and then into the Isinglass. Our discussion, although we need, we didn't reach a firm conclusion was that given that New Hampshire DES was going to be looking at this because of the fact that they do need a shoreline permit because of the discharge to the Isinglass.
It's a protected waterway.
It's a protected waterway. So did we really need to for them to spend the money to have this review when the New Hampshire DES review should be more than adequate to protect the Isinglass, which of course is our primary concern. So that was one thing. I do want to say a couple of other things as we go through because he's probably gonna go over some of this. That there were a couple of issues raised by the road agent that he was calling for the 16, well, talking about the 16-foot wide driveway and that it ought to build the private road standards and didn't agree. It suggested the 12 feet end is inadequate. I will point out that this is under the standards and subdivision regulations, driveways are required to be between 10 and so therefore the 12 feet that connects down to it and it's fully within regulations. And this is not a private road. This is a driveway. Regulations also state that driveways can service three ounces to bots. So which means me to the second point was, well, there ought to be an ownership and ongoing maintenance for the shared driveway access road. That's required for private roads. It is not required for a driveway. So that's not applicable in this case.
At least according to my reading. Yeah. Are you proposing a driveway, I mean, a road maintenance or driveway maintenance thing between the three bodies?
I would imagine he's gonna do that just to keep everybody.
Okay, but I don't think that necessarily needs to require me because that.
You don't have to require it, but that they offer it up.
That would be.
That one of your conditions of the approval because he's offering it.
Okay, so if you could address that as part of this, but with respect to the next down from 12 feet from the 16 feet, that is compliant with the regulations. All right. Go ahead.
With that, yes, there'll be, of course, will be drafted easements for the with the driveway going over to the first two lots and then there will be a road association road agreement drafted up for all the three lots to to sign and that everybody's aware of purchase lots.
It will be attached to their deed.
You can.
They add a note to the plan that there's gonna be a driveway maintenance. I think if that way that it would be ought to be approved.
Come by breaking it so it's part of their deed. It prevents it. It creates skin in the game and ownership for the people that are on there and it prevents somebody from coming back and squawking the town over. Okay. One party is not.
That might be something to look at as our subdivision regulations and we're going.
Okay. John, can you come up with some words?
Yeah, I've been.
Okay.
And that should be easy to incorporate right away.
Right.
Language.
Okay, sorry.
That wraps it up, except for I handed out the renderings and I'll play a video that incorporates showing the approach and showing aerial of the, it actually sounds a little bit, I guess.
Hopefully it's not the Falcon.
So of course, this is the last lot on the.
It's on a new computer you got because you've done this a couple of times lately.
We got somebody that does it for us. Yeah, we do most of our projects now. It's a great visual and you put some nice cars in.
It does give the.
That's an Amazon van.
He didn't put the smiley on it, but it looks like. He usually puts a hybrid truck in there.
Right, yeah, this is good. This gives the board a good perspective.
It'll be a good sales pitch.
And then one of the last last slides that will come up, we'll show all the setbacks and the property lines and everything. So you get a aerial visual of that.
Where would your mailbox is be?
It's all on YouTube.
No, where?
I guess they'll have to go down at the road.
Yeah, because even though it's a private driveway, they won't go up. So they'll be there and then there'd have to be a street sign put in there too. I noticed it was, I think that should be one of the things that.
Should be added.
The developer should be putting that in at the very beginning, just so in case of emergency, even during construction, knowing they're going. And now that you got the road name with those driveway layouts, you could probably get an email number for what each one of those home to be, just on the plan of driveway locations.
Okay. All right. Any questions about the presentation?
So previously I asked for a profile on the driveway, which I'm looking at here. And so it's 1% grade. And I'm looking at our subdivision regulations. It says driveway grade shall not exceed a 10% grade and shall maintain a negative grade until it's beyond the ditch line. I seem to remember, at least under some circumstances, that it has to be a certain distance for some of our fire trucks or ambulances or something, but I'm not remembering the details. Does anyone else remember?
There's a thing about a great transition, you know, it still sticks see a 5% transition. So if you go 5% plus 5% to get to 10% so that the vehicle doesn't bottom out or drag their bumpers, however you want to look at it when you make the transition. That's probably what you're thinking about is what my guess is.
But it but it is a good question that if that this transition is pretty quickly, it's a 1% grade off the road and then ramps up to 10% within.
What?
30 feet? Roughly.
Those regulations they put on driveways? They're not. It's not. It's not in there. It's a fire code thing and fire code regulations don't apply to 1 and 2 families because of how the fire code is was amended by the state when they adopted it. But it's a good, it's a good thing to try to make sure you don't want the fire truck to bottom out.
I mean, it is a good question.
Yeah, I mean, we're going going down 1%, up 1% for a little bit and then into the 10%. The chief did have the plans and reviewed them.
He did.
That was it.
Okay, so the fire chief has looked at this. He didn't have an issue. Fire chief doesn't have an issue, then. Right, he's selected road name. That's that was his own.
How many feet is it from Parker Mountain as the driveway goes? How many feet along the driveway is it from 126 to the farthest house?
The driveway ends at 550. That's why we did the turnaround up in here for emergency because they have to get up. No, both driveway.
The emergency.
There there is a, there is a hammerhead. Driveway.
It's just for the light.
It's not like you're a business that offer to have lights so people come out, he can get to their car.
Right.
Five ways, no less than pounds. I don't have any lights. It's ever been an issue because you're in your car with the lights on at night.
Yeah, that. So it's an unwet road, but there is a hammerhead to throw vehicles.
Even in all of the subdivisions, none of them actually have lighting on the road. It hasn't anything that's in there. And I know at one time they started to put them in a yellow place and they were called on because the town didn't want to have the future maintenance of lights and stuff in that subdivision that if the town took the road over.
That's understandable. I I did not have lights and then town came in and said, oh, how about if we and we all signed it, signed up and said, no. It's dark at night and we like it that way. So don't.
That's why you moved to Barrington to be in the.
Right.
Want to see the stars.
Yeah, that that's correct. Okay, any anything else? All right, if there are no further questions from the for the from the board, then I am going to open the public hearing for comments and questions from in the public. Anyone in the room that wishes to make comment can come up and take Mr. Frankwood's place. So we can state your name and address. If there's anybody online, raise your hand. If you're on Microsoft Teams, if you're on a landline or on your cell phone, then star six to unmute and and offer comments. Public hearing is open.
Just for the record, would you like to read that one?
Yes, I will.
Just so it's in.
Yep, thank you. While we're waiting to see if anybody wishes to make comments, we did have one one comment, public comment that came in via email today. This is from a Hillary Parkhurst. Says, my concern regarding this matter relates to the health and safety of the Isinglass River. I will sound ensure that no poisonous runoff gets into the river, both during construction and after completion. Considering the grade of lot being subdivided approximately the river, this is of utmost concern. What if any repercussions will there be for noncompliance as the state department is notified of this project? And Ms. Parkhurst did say that she was going to be tuning in to the meeting. So if you are listening to this, Ms. Parkhurst, please speak up. Okay.
And I think the comment about the state shorelines, looking at this and then look at this really closely, that comment about is the state gonna be involved?
Right. The answer to that is yes, there's a state shoreline permit. New Hampshire DES will be in.
And it's also the advisory, Isinglass Advisory Committee that will be weighing in when the state looks at it because they they actually call themselves. I think it's advisory.
Advisory, they just send advisory to DES.
All right. Hearing no comments, then with respect to Ms. Parkhurst comment, your response is?
We have to submit to the state for a review for drainage and driveway within 250 of the.
All right. Any final comments, questions during the public hearing? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. Okay, so now we can consider whether to approve this application. So the board, does anybody have any discussion?
No, I mean, I first I like the design that I want you to explain the reasons for the design and everything.
Steve, you can comment.
Well, actually, the last person who's who had a comment, maybe think, so with that kind of grade of driveway, which is our maximum allowed, that probably means there's going to be a good bit of salting required.
Yeah, I mean, we're catching catching most of the runoff from the road and bring it into a sediment bore bay and then into a pond and then discharge through a multi-stage.
Sure, there's something New Hampshire DES can look.
Yeah.
Not just the, and it's not just driveway. You also have 126 there with slopes, which you're gonna have water, salt, so and so forth, that actually has up to this point, that road, right, that road runoff has been happening for decades and I would think that whatever runoff you have, it's going to, as Mr. Frankwoods has addressed, is going to be treated, whereas the runoff of the road, particularly on the north side, there is no treatment and it's going right into the Isinglass. So I would think if it's self-used within this driveway would pale in comparison to what's being dumped on 126.
Especially with that negative pit next to the road, it actually funnels that water back to those detention ponds too.
Right.
What what's the overall winding length from the bottom of the driveway? Is it as you drop off the slope, you hit into that negative and then it contours back up? It looks like it's roughly about 20 or so.
Yeah, 20.
The only concern I think I would have on that is you're gonna you're gonna have roughly, I always assume two cars per house. So you're gonna have six cars coming down that driveway and I think of winter travel, coming down that driveway and sliding out onto 126.
Well, you haven't applied for a driveway permit for this yet with the state having.
Right, I wanted to get.
Okay, I have a feeling the state's gonna engage on that specific matter.
Yeah, because I wouldn't want to be roaring down that.
Right.
Slide out into a state highway.
Well.
Kind of find something goes negative.
It does, but only for about 20 feet, which is not a lot of.
I do not.
You're not stopping 5,000 pounds.
I'm thinking the state is not probably, it's gonna want that slope to be decreased for a little further up into the drive. I suspect. But that's not even.
Usually they look at the car, is able to come into the traffic without having some type of slope going up or downhill so that it can, you know, merge into traffic.
Well, you could come typical and and start at a 5% slope. Probably.
What's the slope thing? It's like 10% always.
Yeah, right.
On a vertical curve, they're not quite kind of decreasing those up slope.
And that by the looks of it, that drive's gonna cut down.
Yeah, it's and that's what we're trying to avoid is a bigger cut.
Right. Already get the existing grade. You are gonna have to cut.
Yeah.
So you may have to cut further. They're still gonna have to comply with the 10. Well, they're still gonna have to comply with the 10, 10, 10 degrees. 10%. Whatever, they still have to comply with regulations.
If the driveway's changed because of UFT, they would have to come back because that would be changing.
All right. The further. Okay.
Let's have a discussion on what item one for plan.
Okay. I added a D, mailbox location. Or an E.
So typically that zoning special exception would be listed. Stu.
Zoning special.
That was granted by the planning board.
Yes. So add so add a plan note. So 1A would be the thing.
Add a note that the special exception granted by the zoning board, I think the date's on that funding. On December 15th, 4.1.2.
So special exception. Right, what else?
The waiver you granted tonight should be a note that's added to.
Okay. Waiver to 14 points.
14.1, like 1, 14.
Other one stating that all three auto owners, the road association, would be approved.
Would that be?
I know there was a talk about putting it on the plan. I know there was a talk about putting it on the plan, showing.
Part of a D, D two.
Yeah, but usually a rep, put it on the, so a lot of times it'll reference on the plan.
Okay.
I mean, I.
So that'd be a plan note?
Plan, yeah.
Okay, so.
The D, the D will show our road, uh, road agreement.
All right, add a plan note that adds reference to.
A road agreement for the three lots.
Plan note with the.
Add. Need to show. Well, add reference, well, the D will be separate, but add reference to, uh, where it's not a road, do we want to say driveway?
You could. Or maintenance, a maintenance agreement, probably be the best way to do it.
Okay, to driveway.
How about, yeah. Yeah, because they're showing a thirty-five foot right away, so you could buy the right stuff.
Any other changes?
Uh, show the sign to go, the sign would have to be part of the final.
Show what's on?
Uh, street sign, name sign.
Oh. So that's a, that's not a plan note, that's to the plan, right?
Right, and it would show like the sign.
All right.
Location on the, the sign.
Right, so.
And have conditions that the sign be part of the final approval.
Add.
Can I ask a question? Why, why is it getting a street sign if it's a driveway?
Because three or more by our regulations required to have a road name.
Yeah, by the.
It's in our regulations and it's also in that E nine one one requirements.
Yep. Yeah, right, it's just one of those like driveway.
It's still a.
Yeah, I, I.
Look in the subdivision regs, it says once you hit three on a shared drive, it's required to have a road name.
Right, and then no fours where subdivision regulation.
Said you gotta have a build a private road.
Yeah.
That's, uh, that's part of the stuff that Jeff was trying to address in his fix, on the stuff you have to look at that he wrote up for you. Why didn't you get it done quickly?
Why didn't you do it so I didn't have to?
Because I was busy running the select board. There were a few good words, Jeff is more.
Yeah, I know.
That's right.
No good deed goes unpunished.
I'm not sure if there's other stuff you want to do with it.
Yep.
Um, the septic approvals, those are usually done to each lot because they showed that four K. But in place of that, you would put the subdivision approval number because the lots are less than five acres, so you need state subdivision approval.
So scratch septic approval and add subdivision?
State subdivision approval number.
I, I, Scott did reference that.
And then also the state shoreline approval number would have to be on that because of that shoreline permits needed because of.
All right, so we need to better.
You'd want that on the.
Gee, right, so states.
Shoreline.
State shoreline. All right.
That's all the notes that I picked up during the conversation.
Okay.
Plus there's other ones I missed, which.
All right.
Could be.
No, I, I think you got them all, John, thanks. Okay. With that said, with those modifications, I will read draft notice of decision. Just informing the Barrington playing board at its March one, twenty twenty, immediately condition. All the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant. Prior to the plan being certified by the planning certification plans required prior to commencing, site work or a recording when the plan, once these precedent conditions are met and the plan is certified, the approval is considered final. Uh, please note, if all the precedent conditions, uh, are not done within six calendar months to the day, by September first, uh, twenty twenty-two, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed. Correct?
Yeah, I think the subdivision was a year, wasn't it? Site review that had been six months.
Okay. Can we check that? I thought it was one year. I should know that.
Just gave.
I thought it was a year.
I think the site. Somebody was talking about trying to make.
I keep that in mind as I'm doing these site regulation changes. I'm sorry to hold you up here, Mr. Franklin. Just trying to get it right.
Better be here, otherwise we screwed up the last one.
Uh, that's correct. So.
Point two, point three. I'd say six months.
That means. That means.
Whoops.
Whoops, on the last.
Some one year on the site review.
Yeah, okay, so it is six months, all right.
So.
Okay.
I got a feeling he's going to have it in way before the.
Uh, yes, it's a lot. Yeah, he'll. Problem, okay, well, it's a good thing we looked that up. All right, so back to beating this, so it, uh, you got six calendar months to the day by September first, twenty twenty-two, board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreeable extension has been granted by the board. We request that you add the, for condition precedent, add the following plan notes. Uh, A, a special exception is granted by the Z B A of fifteen December, twenty twenty-one. Also, a plan note that, uh, a waiver was granted to fourteen point one point one on, uh, one March, twenty twenty-two by the planning board. Uh, add the following to the plan, the owners, oh, excuse me, and also on the plan notes, add reference to the driveway maintenance for the right of way. To A, add the owner's signature, B, D O T approval number, C, the state subdivision approval number, D, the wet scientist's signature, E, uh, the mailbox location, F, add the street sign name and location, and G, the shoreline permit. Number three, any outstanding fees shall be paid to the town. Number four, prior to obtaining the board's signature, the applicant shall submit three complete, uh, paper print plan sets and supporting documents as required in Article Three with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the condition's approval. This shall include final and complete reports for all items, uh, submitted during review for the town appearing in its file. The chairman shall endorse three copies of the approved plans, meeting the conditions of approval. The town shall retain a sign and approve reproducible eleven by seventeen in PDF format with support of documents for town records. The applicants' engineers should certify writing, the improvements have been constructed as approved prior to the issuance of a, certificate of occupancy. And actually, that needs to be moved down to, that can be number two under general and subsequent conditions because obviously the engineer can't certify that, uh, everything has been constructed as approved.
That, this was part of that whole template thing that we had.
Right, that we need to fix, yeah, but I'm just saying, we need to move that down because, uh, that's, that can't be a conditions precedent, you can't have the work completed before the plan's. All right, general and subsequent conditions, number one, uh, where no or active or substantial work required under this approval is commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed. This approval will expire an extension not to exceed one year, may be granted by majority vote of the board so long as is applied for at least thirty days prior to the expiration. Board may grant only one such extension for any proposed, uh, plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure, uh, compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure of at least twenty-five percent of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure, meaning in this is the construction of roads, storm drains, improvements indicated on the site. And then number two will be the applicants' engineer shall certify and writing improvements have been constructed as approved prior to the issuance of this certificate of occupancy. Okay, with that, notice of decision, uh, as edited here. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve this application?
Make a motion that we, uh, two, uh, one six dash one, that's G R dash, dash parentheses, three.
All right, I have a motion to approve this application, do I hear a second? Okay, done, okay, so we have a motion by Ron Allard, a second by Donna Masucci, uh, to approve this application. All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Brad, Brad, I, uh, Steve Dine? Andy Napp? Ron Allen? Okay, by unanimous vote, uh, we have approved this application and, uh, we wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just laughing, I saw. Fire chief that says ASAP, I was. Line up. Well, maybe you should spell it out.
Got other things going on, other than.
You think so? Yeah, I know, the select board keeps you busy. Yeah. Well, that's because they can.
And he was, he was trying to eat some, uh.
Okay, well, uh, all right, before we get to the, the next case, uh, we've been at this almost an hour and a half, does anybody need a break? Okay, uh, then we'll take a five-minute break and also gives time for conference setup. Good thing that might talk. All right, so I'm going to reconvene the meeting here after our short break. And next up is application two twenty-three dash twenty-six dash fifty-seven, R C twenty-two, which is, uh, property owner Joe Falzone, one twenty-five development, uh, wants to, is proposing one multi-use building with commercial on the bottom floor for residential units above and additional garage bays and, the stalls, tenants of the property. And I'll note that this is, uh, to be located on a parcel that is across the street from Newtown Hall. Whenever that gets completed.
Just a clarification, you did purchase this property, so you're not the owner, correct?
We got, yep.
So technically, the owner right now is actually going to be John O'Neill, not, uh, Joe Falzone. Because they, sorry, was it last week the transfer I came across? Yeah, I think it was, it was just, it was, it was only a few days ago I came through, I saw it, yeah.
So.
Between the time, Mr. Jeff, actual application and then night.
Okay, so, all right, yeah, I've just, the application said.
At the time it was.
At the time it was. Okay.
But I just thought it should be.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's fine. You are now the owner, right? So Mr. Falzone is out of the picture. So, Mr. Falzone is out of the picture. Got it. So, as you've been sitting there patiently, uh, waiting and as we've done before, how about if you give us the found, uh, foot view.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Name is Scott Cole from Beers Associates. I have here with me John O'Neal from Stoner Development, developer and really the owner, former owner of the property. Looking at this parcel and show. This is as stated, a cross section of Town Hall is to be built and in front ridge at Green Hill Sub. For partial location, you can see Route one twenty-five is actually the bottom of the section. The, uh, new, yet to be drive is on the east of Utah and the subdivision would be just behind it. Current proposal is a commercial building. Uh, excuse me, three. Is, is that two units, uh, being eight units with residential units above, so be eight units. Behind that is a garage building made up of eight garage bays. This will be utilized either by the clientele, commercial space or residential use of the commercial space. Uh, the unit sizes are twenty-four wide by forty. As said, was but is on this parcel that is provided by hashed area. And is the proposed septic location. Well, a different page is actually, uh, north of that located by the bi retention pond. Now with this plan here, you can see there's two drainage features are currently going to be built as part of the subdivision behind it, which was required by the AOT permit at Green Hill Sub. The AOT requirement was to provide drainage in preparation for a commercial site plan on this lot. So as you can see, they're both labeled. The, the lower one is a wet pond to be built for subdivision. The upper one is a bio retention pond. Now, the wet pond is totally utilized from the subdivision, however, the bio retention pond was designed and situated to be applied to this commercial site. Continuing on with drainage. Drainage plan, very simply, the drainage comes off of the pavement area and is consolidated in roof drains. It's brought, brought to the bio retention pond and is settling, which then goes in. Now, it is a requirement on this commercial lot as well as the remainder of the requirement of AOT that this is a small lot, but it is required to go back for an AOT permit amendment. It's currently pending. That's basically for the state to ensure what design would be adequate for both. Fire protection, had a couple of meetings, Chief Walker with design. Circulation around the thing, there's good circulation and safe zones around the building for apparatus. An existing fire system. Northeast. Located adjacent to the hall property. That was on to be adequate for fire protection for this parcel. As standard requirements, we did provide a lighting plan. We had hired Sharon, Sharon Incorporated, professional lighting engineer to do a lighting schematic and design. There is a proposal, two light poles in addition to the wall packs shown on the lighting plan. We believe in the review, I believe from planning, but we do believe this meets all the intent. Requirements are all met. Pavement areas and anything that could be for parking areas. We've also provided a landscape plan as required.
We believe that. What, what category did you pick?
Can, uh, we need, do you need to discuss that? I have notes on that too. Let me finish this to accept the application then get it to.
Yep.
Go over the landscape real quick. Uh, we created a landscape plan. As you can see, we provided vegetation around and adjacent to the garage areas on the sides of the proposed building and at all, um, pavement corners to dress up the site. Now, this also has to the north of it. What, what the remainder that won't be cleared for the actual subdivision will be intact here as much as possible because that is a hundred foot buffer to the residential use of the subdivision. And then obviously again, uh, to the north here is a, will be another commercial site plan, so it's not as needed. Uh, we did provide building elevations. See if I can switch over. We did go over the building preliminarily at the design review. There was some commentary from the planning board that we tried to address. Mr. O'Neal has provided some elevations here. He's worked with his architect to try and address all the concerns. There's a stepped building. They've added character for it as far as the you'd see there is some roof lines, some different lines here, some coloration to really break up the buildings on the front facade. In the rear, which for the most part will not be seen, as you can see here, it's still stepped, broken up in two colors and then we have the, uh, garages under that. Now, I say that that won't be seen because it actually works beneficial that the garages that are proposed behind the commercial buildings is actually located right behind the building and actually kind of buffers the residential uses. So any kind of noise or anything like that will be certainly broken down before against the residential use behind. And then the bottom here, as you can see, is the proposed garage building, broken to bays and it matches the current building, as you can see there. So again, it's a multi-use proposal. We believe we've tried to address everything. We'll try to address any questions you may have.
Okay, with that, uh, then, uh, Kevin, you vote on whether to accept this as complete? And then we can go ahead. Same. Some of the same things. So, does anybody have any questions as to whether this application can be accepted as complete or not?
Uh, the only thing that's not totally clear to me, um, it's not very specific about what the use is exactly. Maybe that is appropriate. I just, can you clarify the, the use one more time?
Certainly, yeah, that's actually a good point, Steve, that's worth mentioning. Yeah, the bottom floor is actually commercial spaces and at the time currently, uh, the entire bottom floor will be occupied by Mr. O'Neal's companies. They are a large development company consisting of contractors, architects, in, in those kind of fields. They will occupy actually the bottom eight units at this time until I believe the subdivision is built out, John. And sometime down the road when they're ready to move on, they will be, well, maybe you can speak better.
No, that'll be a permanent home. That's gonna be a permanent home. I'm sixty-eight years old. I'll go anywhere else.
Yeah, I do, we did discuss that during designer view, that it would be Mr. O'Neal's company that was moving in there.
Correct. Office space in the front with the garages towards the back.
Right.
Now, the garages in the back, what's the use of those?
It'd be secondary for the people that are living in there. Um, if we have, you know, develop, would, would actually developing some equipment now because we maintain a couple of other apartments. So we may have our own trucks parked in there and get them up site, so.
So that's gonna be a commercial use of part of the residential.
It's gonna be commercial, more likely.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can address anything we might want in a notice of decision with respect to uses. I think we did actually ask you about.
Some of the uses are just the office use, in case it changes and.
It's often the office in the front, you know, but we've got the designers, we've got realtors, we have three accountants and.
The reason why I asked, a lot of times they'll come in and they'll say multiple uses that fit into a category that meets the same parking requirement. That way in the future, if something changes in there, you wouldn't have to come back to the board because you already got approved as a use. That's the reason why I'm asking.
Now, to clarify, when you said the garage is for industrial use, you mean the detached garages or the attached garage?
Attached garages.
Attached.
Yes, it's attached.
What if the attached are going to be?
They can be leased by the people that live up above. They can parking outside, to be quite frank, you know, because there's a lot of parking out there. Like, there's the spaces, secondary. Doesn't matter, you know? They're gonna be renting a physical space upstairs. Choose to rent, uh, one of the spaces downstairs, do that, we can double, provide parking on the outside if they don't wanna pay for that. Got a house I'm building, Stratton, right now, and two bays right for my equipment, and I've gotta get it somewhere, so it's.
Alright, is there, are there questions pertinent to whether we accept the application as complete?
The only thing that comes up to me is being it's a commercial lot and we're looking at a mixed use development on the lot. Does that align with the commercial aspect of?
Well, but we've got it, building all these residence, residences behind this with the commercial lots on the front. So it doesn't seem inconsistent. It's almost like a transition from apartments to single family homes behind it. Wow. And I believe in within regional community, commercial, that is a.
Well, because he's, what he's doing is, to follow with Andy's thing, that to do the mixed use for residential use in that regional commercial within that five hundred feet, you have to use, any residential use has to be part of a mixed use building. And by a definition, the mixed use building has to have residents above the first floor and then they give you a list of commercial uses that can be used on the first floor and that's actually written, written in zoning. I think that was the question you were asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we look on the definition and zoning under mixed use structures, that shows you what answer your question.
That was where I was.
It's in definition and zone. This is one of the things that that first applicant that I picked up on, so.
Visual, visual door from the back. That's gonna be enclosed.
Yes.
So doesn't it act?
So.
Another door to the garage.
You can use development. It can be either.
They could have a door.
Right, Missy says that.
You may or may not, depending on the lease.
Try to keep control of any, uh, common areas on our rental so that if there's heat or.
Institutional civic.
Services or.
He's showing that it meets the.
Isolated.
Technically meets the letter of the permission, mixed use structure.
Yeah, that was my only concern.
And the garage in the back isn't, doesn't, it's not residential, so that's just the residential has to be on the side.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yeah, part of it, yes.
Okay.
The other part of it. So as far as being consistent, so the application is measured into that, right?
Great. Alright, any other questions with respect to whether it's. Alright, uh, then I will maintain a motion to, uh, accept the application as complete.
Motion, uh, complete, application, uh, two two three dash nine six dot fifty-seven dash R C dash twenty-two dash R S R.
So we have a motion by, uh, Ron Allen, seconded by Jeff Brand to accept, uh, this application as complete. Roll call vote, Steve Diamond. Brand I. So, uh, the board by unanimous vote accepts the application as complete. Alright, so now we can get into some more details here, questions, well, you you had some questions here.
Yeah, I wanted a couple of questions, um. What lighting category did you select you? Five categories.
Three, what?
Three. Categories you select, which one did you select, you know?
I also, myself, um, had relayed that, I think, and I know the board is particular on that, so I had actually sent him the town regulations for lighting requirements, knowing those residential. I believe that it was just designed for office.
Uh, yeah, when I looked at the table in general, it's on, uh, page fifty-four of the site review, uh, regulations. That, that table, looking at it, it, it appeared to be fit into the category of, uh, a medium, which is, you know, office parks, uh, you know, residential complex parking. So that seems appropriate. Now, what was noted by the planner, uh, planning, uh, planning in Lanny's office was that, uh, that means the maximum values were two forty-four, the minimum of zero point six. And I have to be honest, because look by seventeen plans, the print is so fine, that, uh, but as far as I can see, it, it appears that you, you, here, max min values are, um, as, as far as around the residences, behind the garage, I mean, that absolutely, that's not applicable, but it appears to vary from about, uh, zero point six to, uh, three point zero, which is slightly outside of range that is specified for median use. I was gonna ask if.
Two point four, so it's three is not slightly out.
Yeah, uh, so I was I almost made a bad pun about could you illuminate this on this, but, uh, yeah, two point four, so the three is somewhat, uh, it, it appears the three is up along the building. And can we assume that that is because of lighting on the building? Right. So, I I mean, that, that's where it, it appears that it's the perimeter of the building. As Mr. Allen has pointed out, that the max would be two point four under the, the table values uh, for a median use with a minimum of point six. It appears that within parking area, you're meeting the point six, but you're slightly, you know, above the illumination levels desired immediately around the building. And I guess the well, while we're at it, uh.
We could certainly.
A follow-up, I, I mean, it just seems like if that is what's illuminating those areas that are in excess of the suggested values from the table, you know, we have one or two things that could be done. One is you request a waiver, or B, you could just reduce, you know, the wattage on lighting that's on the exterior of the building and reduce the levels so that they're back within the table.
Yep.
Which to me seems like, I, I wouldn't even think the fixtures would need to change. I would think that it would be a, a simple case of whatever bulbs are put into the fixtures, you know?
Well, as I zoom in, Mr. Chairman, I can see that the where the higher, uh, values are coming from is where there's more of an extreme overlap between the lumens. So as you can see, there's a, there's like a three oh or two nine, but the normal course for a, a wall pack that where it's not overlapping the one next to it, we have an average of two point two, two point seven.
Okay.
Which is more, I, I believe what the fireman is.
Right.
So simply, I think we could spread them out and actually delete the fixture and I think it would provide.
Okay, which, I'm glad you brought that point up because another, uh, requirement, uh, two requirements that I didn't see on your lighting plan is number one, the mount height for all fixtures. So that would include the wall fixtures and I didn't see that on the plan. I did see the pole height. So that would include the wall fixtures, and I didn't see that on the plan. I did see the pole heights. Those lights that are around the parking lot, but I didn't see what the mount height was on, built itself, unless I missed it.
The W ones are listed wall mount at twenty feet.
Okay, I said the print was pretty small.
Yeah, there's a legend on the upper right, luminar schedule. You know, they are showing both, uh, wall, wall pack.
Oh, I see, it's at the end of the description, okay, so that is there, uh, but the other thing is, is that. Site plan requiring three eight. Right, it does say four point six. In the table.
Those and I have seen that value, I would have to hunt it down.
So, given, given its location in proximity. With the one hundred foot buffer knowledge in proximity to a residential development. It would seem that it, I would think personally that we'd want to stay within the values that are in the table. And decrease luminance somewhat, as far as the maximums are concerned.
Yep, we certainly have no problem doing that. I, I gotta be honest, this is the first time I've been told to dim it down. You can certainly do that.
All right, well, the other thing though is that, uh. That site plan regulation, three point eight parents five, says that you will, that part of the plan will be the building elevations. That show the illumination of the building from the building mount. And, uh, that's, that's not reflected in the plan.
Okay, I thought that was, I might have been thinking.
I didn't see, did any, it's not, it's not shown on the elevations. Okay, so, uh, that, that would be something that would have to be. Other questions, uh, not, so. You talked about there would have to be an AOT amendment. The, uh, because this drainage is, is in connection with what had to be installed part of the development. Now, so the wet pond, that was for the subdivision, correct?
Correct.
Is the, uh, the other pond, is that part of?
So the fire retention pond is being built as part of the overall subdivision and was sized for the proposed commercial use.
Okay.
So basically, we have to apply to AOT so they can verify our quantities going to it. So in a sense, we need to file for another AOT permit.
All right. Um, because I, uh, one of the things that's got to concern, whether we're going to send this to third party review, so I'm trying to find. Figure out the extent to which it's already previously been reviewed, and whether this is minor compared to what it is. You need to do, you're basically talking about runoff from park and the building.
Yes, which again was previously, this was specifically designed for that.
All right.
It's more of a double check, which I'm sure you.
Okay.
Do by AOT again.
Okay.
Just to clarify, they brought it forward to the AOT when the whole subdivision, they didn't have a layout of how the pot was actually going to be. And where the previous areas are going to be. That's the reason why it has to go back to them, so they could verify that what they created for a previous area works to go into that drainage.
Okay, uh, in addition to the illumination, uh, elevation. And I also note that the, it appears, and again, while I'm working off, it's eleven by seventeen, but it doesn't, uh, some, so small. But it doesn't appear that the, uh. Block for the planning board is, I guess I don't even see it. Or maybe that's it, no, that's the owner's signature, so I'm not sure where the block for the planning board to sign off is. I also, uh.
We had put, put one on the left of the.
Not to sign off, it's supposed to just be a block.
Oh, yeah, there is a, okay, so that doesn't meet the standards in the regs where our signature block here.
That's fine, I may have changed it.
Okay, uh, also, uh. Benchmarks, where the benchmarks, they're required to be on each.
Okay, um, I know there are some new ones as a result of the construction that's ongoing.
Okay.
So I can certainly put those on the plan.
All right, they need to reflect that in plan, also, uh. So there's also required notes of which you got them all, uh, except one. Under site plan review regulation, three point two point ten, parent nine. There is a, a note there that is required to be on the plan that I did not see as of still. Town plan that you added, the town, you added three, there was a fourth. Yeah, you, uh, like. John sheet, uh. At the town notes, there are three that are there, that, that are all required. Oh, yeah, it is on. Uh, yes, so the plan note that's missing says in accordance to town regulations, RSA's six seventy-six thirteen, all improvements. That's on the site plan shall be constructed, completed, inspected, approved by the town of Barry, prior to the issue. That's a required note, and I got to. Notes that were on. Okay, uh, those are my questions, other members, what, what questions do you have? I'll, I'll also note that the fire chief had a comment that all of the, um. That all of the unit entrances had to be properly marked with address numbers for emergency services.
I have a kind of a basic question. The, um, so, what side faces the dash garages? Is this facing the garages or the residential side? This is facing the garage.
So it's garage to garage.
Right.
Right.
Think that's on the backside.
But the residential.
I guess I have, based on your previous answer, I got a problem.
Well, they can't park in front of the garage, so is that, what's the space there, Scott? Thirty-five feet?
Should take out the, you can't park in front of the garages, there's no place for the residents to park.
That originally had just been a parking.
Oh, you hear park?
Oh, there you go, right there.
They're entering this side, yes, uh, you can't park in front of the garage, leave it parked.
But the parking in the fronts for the business and the parking in the backs for the residential?
Yes.
There's no.
Yeah, no, no, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Doors on the other side.
That's, that's why I was asking where the entrance is.
Okay. Yeah, the doors on the other side.
Right, so if you can't park in front of the doors. Right, right.
Makes no sense.
This shows multiple, the plan shows multiple parking spots along the. That's where the entrance is. So it, the valid question, where, where are the residents going to park if they aren't?
Can't park in front of this, or where they.
Do you see an issue with them renting the garage space?
I think making. Taking an optional is a problem.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a requirement. That's, we, zoning, as far as you're concerned?
The zoning says you have to have the commercial use on the first floor. Um, garage uses are considered accessory use, it's not a residential use if you go by the zoning definition. So you're not putting any residential use on the first floor, and you do have that commercial use on the bottom floor. Let's just, I'm just going to read the definition of a, a mixed use structure, so that as a board, you guys can. See what it actually says.
This is the piece I've been kind of hung up on.
Guidance.
I'm okay with the mixed use, but the parking is a valid issue.
And that's the way, it's like, okay, I'll go to approve the application.
Right.
Through, but the more I get into it, I'm like, I was struggling.
So, so the definition of a mixed use structure says a building which contains dwelling units above the first floor. Of an institutional, civic, office, commercial, or retail use building. So the whole front section would be your retail use building, or your office, depending how you want to look at it. Um, because of how it's set up, now. This zoning is not clear to where the whole first floor has to be. I could see where someone would read this and say the whole first floor would have to meet that definition in order to have that above. And because it doesn't list, um, accessory structures as a residential garages as part of that first floor. But it's also not a residential, but, yeah.
Well, if.
I, I was, I would think that by, by reading this, that it has to be that commercial office, the commercial or retail or institutional on that whole first floor by how this is written.
All right, but if the garages.
If they were part of the commercial space.
They were rented, well, either they were part of the commercial space. They were rented.
Right, because that was storage, the storage is listed, if you go to the table of uses, so storage space is actually listed under.
I guess I just, there's a couple of problems that I run into when I think about this, as I look at. The, the commercial space in the front is what becomes the secondary egress out of it, because I, I don't even see.
Everything sprinkled in there, so once you, once you sprinkle it, your volume is one.
But that, that changes once based on occupancy. Based on the volume of occupancy, you have to have multiple means of egress from any structure at that point, that, that becomes a. I, I mean, you don't want to, that's where you start getting into things like the station nightclub fire, the Boston Coconut Grove.
The sprinklers throw a different, uh, asterisk on the phone too.
And if you fire, if you fire separate the units, they're considered separate structures by the definition in the fire code too. So if you have a firewall that meets that three hour meeting, then consider.
These firewalls up, so it really isolates, so you. If I were to say that the, uh, the residents are renting it. And, and, and listen, it's a plan words, I've done it in several communities where we've done this project, but I want to meet the letter of the law, so how do I make it commercial? And make it separate from the residential, you can rent this, and in fact, you will rent it, but it's secondary to the residential. If that makes sense, that cover the letter of the law, and but, but, but I've done these units several times in several communities, so it isn't just here. But I, I want to meet the letter of the law, so that's why it's a little grand.
That's why I was reading this, because it says self-storage facilities are listed as a commercial use.
Right.
Well, I, I've also got a question here, though, it looks like, if I'm looking at this, you've got eighteen feet, yeah, I mean, your plan shows. What I would interpret is parking spots back to the building, you've got twenty feet, you've got eighteen feet for parking spots, then you've got twenty-four feet. Back to the garage, which you show as basically a roadway, in which would be twenty-four feet is plenty to drive trucks, so. Uh, why, why would you prohibit the residents from parking back there and or, you, you know, renting them the garage? Even if they pulled out of the garage and shut the door, or they pulled up the garage door and are unloading groceries into the unit and they're parked there. Why, why is that a problem? I mean, you show them.
It's just, it's trying to get John's interpretation, to make sure it meets the letter of the law, we talked about this in the beginning, and, and it's done. We, we did one in a different, uh, adjacent community, and we actually had to say, because it was commercial, it's a mixed use area, it was. It's just done very commonly in a lot of communities now, but in this case, they want a straight commercial, so we had to say. Yeah, on, you know, that it was a rental unit that it could be utilized by the tenants up above, so that was the sort of play on words. What's unique about this is it makes sense to really do it, you know, and so.
Right, to rent, rent.
Here if you don't do it, I have a problem.
Right, because I lose my pocket.
To the law, you were capable of.
But the other piece that I see tied to this is if the garage is a separate unit. The forced entry into that is through the residential entrance, so you.
Ask that before you sit, it can close it, put a, put a door into the garage, but it can be closed, so it's enclosed.
You don't necessarily.
The door going in, the egress coming out of that residential unit cannot go through a garage, so you would have a, a stairway that comes down. You could have a door that goes into the garage, and you could have a door that goes outside, and then they would have their residential door at the top where it could be locked, so. That hallway space could be used for either of the two.
So there would just be a door in the hallway.
If you don't give it to, if you don't give it to them and they want to use it, they can't park in front, there's no place to park, that's the.
Right, there's, that's why, that's why I keep coming around the horn on this, is I'm struggling with the aspect. Of the utilization of a mixed use space, when it doesn't give off the impression of a mixed use space.
Plus, if it's a forty point deep building, twenty feet to the garage, then you get twenty feet the other side.
Okay, but I'm not, I'm not having that big of a problem, the whole front of the building, lower floor, is all office space, then. You know, there is commercial use.
Well, but John's question, and I think it's a valid question, does the regulation require the whole first floor to be commercial? That's the question.
But if you go to self-storage, is it considered a commercial space? If you go to private garages, it's considered an accessory use, so it depends on how you label that back use. Which is what was, that's what this discussion is you're having now, because it's how you label that back use. And if that back use, you're saying it's not a private garage for that residential unit, so it's considered self-storage as a commercial space. Then you're a hundred percent correct, it's now a parking issue, because anybody would have a right to rent that, it wouldn't necessarily have to be the residential person, so.
I put a restriction that says even though it is self-storage and it is a garage, specifically for use of the people up above. I mean, is there some way to, to, to write that up? I'm sure there is some.
That because the question is if that can residential and cause a problem. I, I think it has to be part of the residential unit, but the question is, is that across the same area that we get tangled, you know, wrapped up around the wheel. For the, for the regulations.
Do we need that parking right there, Scott?
We need residential parking period, because the, the whole front is for the commercial use.
Okay.
And you can't, you know, you can't park them on the side and they can walk all the way around. Can't do, you can't make, can't do that. And if it faces the detached carriages, it's not a home to put spots.
And that's, honestly, that would be the best intent, would be that they're parked near and they have extra space in front of us designated specifically for them. But does it meet the letter of the law?
Problem.
Yeah.
That's the question, that's the question and the problem.
Well, the answer. So if just, I, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to talk through it, so if you think about it, if those parking spaces are going to be left there.
Yep.
Because that's going to become a garage for the residential units, technically, that's going to be a private garage, which. Makes it an accessory use, it's no longer a commercial use, so, um. And if that's going to be that way with that parking, it'd probably be worth going to the zoning board to get. Leaf to say that that back portion is an accessory use, but you still got the commercial use in the front or the, what do you call it, um?
Okay, wait a minute, if, if we, i- if we said that the people working the offices up front were parking in those garages in the back. Would there be a problem?
The only problem you have then is your parking issue that.
Oh, no, well, wait a minute, uh, just as far as.
The zoning goes.
As far as zoning goes, would that be an issue?
No.
But your access to it. No, you don't have access, that's the problem.
No, I'm just, I'm asking the question, if the commercial, what, you have access, you, you can cut doors, you can put doors in any.
It'd be similar to Dan's.
But if those, if people in the front businesses were parking in those garages, would that be a problem?
No, it'd be similar to Dan's building where he has like a office space, but they have a garage space that they use and it's also a commercial building.
So that wouldn't be a problem.
No.
So, so we're saying that the use of this space as a garage, per se, is not, is consistent with the ordinance. So now we're saying, oh, well, if one of the people living in apartment parks in the garage, no, that's not okay. You've got to have a person that's working the office out front, park in that garage.
That's not what we're saying, what we're saying is to make it tied to commercial, it actually connects to and becomes part of the commercial space. What you're trying to do is parse it, which is not, not in accordance with our regulation or the agreed process for this.
Well, wait a minute, no, if you put a doorway between the front office, right, and the garage in back. Right, then you could also put a doorway into the hallway going up. Then you could also put a doorway into the hallway going up. Put doors anywhere that you want, all right? Now, so the only difference, though, you're telling me the reason it, it either is good or not good under the ordinance is whose car gets parked in the garage? If it's the guy working at the desk out front, that's okay. But if a resident parks in that garage, no, that's, that's not legal. Well, something about that argument doesn't make sense.
Well, whether it makes sense or not, it is, it is commercial space or residential space and that matters.
Well, it wouldn't be a residential space. It would either be a commercial space or, um, an accessory use. As a resident, it's all above it.
Is an accessory use allowed?
It's, and when I read that definition, that wasn't one of the lower four things. It said civic, um, I can go back to that definition.
It's a civic office, retail or what was that?
So what happens if he rents the garages? It's a separate rental agreement from the apartments.
Then that would be a residential space.
Then I would have a problem with this plan. No parking for residents.
If I, if I definitely rent it, so I say you today, you have to rent, part of your agreement is you're renting a commercial space down below with two, with the garage and you're also getting the slots out in front. So I could, I could create that as a stipulation for you today, for you to B, for you to C, all the way, all, every.
John, you think we could talk to the attorney and see if there's a way around this thing?
Still don't have parking for that.
Well, no, they would have parking, uh, because now inherently I've said, you, you, here's unit one, two, three, four, five, six. You're parking inside and you have the ones outside because you've inherited them because you have a separate lease for those units down below.
Well, and, and I agree with you guys that if they don't park, if the residents don't park in those garages, there is no valid plan as far as I can see for them to park if they don't park. So now we're down to semantics over, you know, what? The owner of the car is determining whether they do or do not meet the zoning ordinance. If it's one of the people working out front, it's okay. If they're a resident, not okay. And somehow there seems, I, I.
I just don't know if I agree with that because.
The use is the same, right?
No, not necessarily, because a garage, a, a, a storage space tied to a commercial unit can be used for um, retail storage, it can be used for a whole myriad of different things that don't, it could be used for.
It could be specifically in physics, showroom has to be parking, so I can actually, I can do, I can direct it, so it has to be what we want it to really be, what it really is. So.
But he's the one occupying the offices out front. Okay, he's not using that.
His storage, in fact, you're using the garage out back, right? Today he's doing that, but that doesn't mean that moving forward, that's what I mean. I can come in here and tell you I'm doing anything today and tomorrow I can tell you to go pound sand with it, right? So like, let's be realistic about, we're here doing a, a, a plan set. And rather than trying to skirt what our rules and regulations are, let's actually try and hold ourselves accountable to it.
Well. That's not the, I'm sorry, I'm a little salty here, but it's been a long day and they're like.
I could take those eight garages on the very top of the plan and I should make that designated parking for the people inside. So now they're parking those eight garages out back. Yeah, I've covered it right.
Uh, so those are the ones facing the garage. So the, the garage is attached and the garage is.
The detached garage is entirely.
And so you're saying designate that as residents parking in the back.
Correct.
And then the.
Basically flip your parking area to the other side.
The garages that are underneath the building.
They're irrelevant, however they turn out, they turn out.
It extends part of the commercial space.
Yes, correct.
Well, that technically it wouldn't have to be because the residence is not above. So those back units can be an accessory use because that would be allowed in the five hundred feet. So if those garages in the back were part of the residential use, there's no residence above it. So it doesn't have to be a mixed use building. It's now an accessory use building which is allowed.
And that would solve the parking problem because then the residents have a place to park.
Yes.
I mean, I think it does, but I think we all agree the better plans for the residents to park on, you know, have, have attached parking where they can meet the weather.
Want to meet the letter of the law and it seems like we can, we found a way to do it, I think.
We can, but I think the original plan was a good plan. I think we just got to figure it applies. Or we can figure a way for it to comply. So I think I'd rather look at it that way first. Is, is there any way we can?
To say, so to say that it would apply, but what John said, he has his residential lease above. And then each garage down below, he has a separate contract as a commercial lease space that each person gets.
Two inside, two out with the same option.
So it can be the same person. The person could rent a, a commercial storage space and have a residential space above it.
I'm just flip flopping the direct, and I think that's it. That was, I, that was right in front of me. I flip flopped it, so now those four spots there with an individual use and the residents park in the detached garages and they're covered now.
I don't think, I, I like the original plan better, but I always can figure a way.
I mean, honestly, I would.
With this one though, this is a good plan.
I mean, honestly, I'd love to be able to see the residents park directly below their space.
And walk, walk, uh, knock in the snow, knock in the rain and walk right upstairs.
The, I mean. It's like.
But you can understand how, it depends on how you look at that use to.
Is this something you have the town attorney, let's take a look at and see if she can figure out a way? Cause I mean, the, the best.
I think, I think at that point in time, it would be her opinion.
Well, uh, no, okay, uh, I mean, before, why would you go to the town attorney and see if there's a way? Why wouldn't, you know, and I, I, I hate to suggest this, but why would.
If you read the zoning requirements, it says that. Me as a zoning administrator shall determine compliance with the zoning ordinance and if someone disagrees, they would appeal that decision to the ZPA. So if those were labeled as a commercial use space that the residents leased their residential thing above and leased the commercial space below. That meets the definition to how I see this zoning done.
Okay, as long, as long as it's.
Or if he did, for the back buildings, because that's restructures.
I think I'm gonna pay with that, but then. You know, to me, it's, it's difficult to say they're required to do it and it's not residential space, you know what I mean? To me, it's got to be, they got to have access to that space. Once they got to have access to the space, it becomes residential.
You want it both ways.
I want to follow the rules and you're a rules guy, so don't give me crap about this. You're the rules guy.
I know.
You know, we don't want to do something contrary to the rules. I agree that it doesn't make sense, but the rules don't have to make sense. You just have to follow.
I know, right?
You're right. I'm the rule, but we didn't plan for a, a different.
So if that's.
Two separate contracts.
And that's essentially what the problem.
It meets the intent, it meets what is written.
The use of the space is the same, whether it's the people upstairs or the people on the front of the building.
They still have protected.
Special use in one case.
No, 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 I'm, I can, forget commercial or residential, the use of that space is the same. You can park a car.
Yes.
It's a garage, but like people upstairs can store stuff in a garage and they can drive in a garage. A commercial unit can drive their cars in the garage or they can store stuff in the garage. The use is the same.
The, by zoning, it's not the same.
Right, the use from a practical standpoint.
What you're doing with the space is the same.
Racticality and. I understand, so, you know, the, the pro, I'm just saying, the problem isn't really the use. The problem is the zoning ordinance because did not, it, it, the regulate, well, it's not a regulation, it's the ordinance. The ordinance really doesn't allow, address this particular certain things.
I think a ZBA variance is the way to go with this. To allow an accessory use on the back of the special building? Yeah. I gotta go that way. If it's a zoning thing, we can't overstep anyway.
I'd rather present it honestly as the eight, eight garages out back have a parking for the residences. And I could have the flexibility and my son's a CPA and he's tough. I could have the use of the garage underneath, the units. It's quite honestly, you're walking across twenty-four feet to get to those units in the back. You can have the use of that and parking and trust me when I tell you, people and parking and cars, it, it's a valuable commodity right now. So that's what we're really looking for. I'm looking for the guy that wants to store a couple of cars. I, I'll be honest with you, or a boat. So I don't have an issue. I'll be honest with you. If, uh, without going to zoning board, I take those eight units in the back, that's the parking residences. I know, it's, maybe it's not convenient, but you have people walking for a mile up to the train tracks to get to parking. This is pretty convenient. It's still kept.
Yeah, it's over. It, it's not terribly inconvenient either.
It's not really. I mean, is it that inconvenient? Not necessarily, no.
Your rendering shows only five, five garages.
There should be eight out there, right?
There should be eight.
Yeah, on the site plan, it's eight.
Yeah, it's. It does show eight on the site plan.
Yep.
Okay.
Got you.
And I just, I hate to, in order to rush through now, do something we're going to live with long term. It's, it's not as good as the preferred plan.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I've been through this battle in two communities and it's a very tough battle and it's a gray area.
Kind of with you on this, we're not working against you.
I know, but, but I went to John. When I talked to John on the very beginning, I knew this is going to, it could come this way. I always knew that, so I needed to have an out and that's the out. I knew that was the out and it just didn't come to me.
Wow.
Because I, I've got to, he has to protect zone, it's his job.
Right.
You know, and, uh, it's a gray area. I don't.
So.
Creating something unique, maybe it's something it should be added in the future, to be quite frank, because we think these are very, very good buildings. They're very flexible. It allows for, it, it allows them to commit to town, to put a bill, building like them and getting some rental. And, you know, reserve it, it pays for itself. It's a great situation.
I think you're right, the rules are a problem because you're presenting a plan that complies, we don't like it.
Okay.
So like, I guess, I guess. My understanding by how Ron and Andy are going on, because, uh, multifamily structures, a lot of them come in where they got the garage underneath. And they have the living space above, but there's no commercial and we see them on a pretty regular basis. And on this lot, you would only get one unit. You wouldn't be able to get the eight units. But you can get them because of the mixed use, because of the commercial space underneath, you can make the septic loading work. And I think that's where Andy and Ron have their hang up, does it meet the definition of a mixed use structure? If you're using the accessory use underneath, it, it's not all commercial underneath. But the accessory use is still allowed within the five hundred feet if you did it as a separate garage units in the back.
Okay, I, and, and just to be clear, I'm not disagreeing with you guys that.
There you are.
There's an issue.
Well, it's okay.
Yeah, I'm saying, well, I agree with, I don't disagree with your interpretation of what the ordinance says. And, and how this is applicable, but, you know, with that said, because we certainly aren't going to resolve it here. It does sound like an, a zoning ordinance issue, uh, in which the, the reg, zoning ordinance doesn't really allow for this or doesn't directly allow for this. But if, if the owner of the property says, then I will have the residents, I will give them parking in this garage. However distasteful or, or inconvenient that may be. He is the person that A owns the property, B, he's going to have to rent the apartments. And if he thinks that he can rent the apartments and people are going to walk twenty-four feet to get to their garage. That's, that's up to him. That's not for us to dictate. He's proposing a solution to us that meets the zoning laws.
Right, so, but I'm assuming like with this is, it's, you have the apartment plus a mandatory rental of a garage unit tied to it. So it's really just one.
Well, but, but in this case, no, it's, it's not going to be a mandatory rent. That will be part of the rent, right? They will get a stall in the garage.
Some, yeah, they're going to get a stall in the back garage.
Right, they'll get a stall in the back garage, so it's.
And, and there's value to this. You'd be amazed that, uh, this great value in the space, whether it be in the building or behind it, it's still great value.
And I, I will say, as a person who didn't own a garage for like sixteen years before I bought my current house. Uh, hey, having a garage, even if you got to walk to it, is, is a heck of a lot better than no garage. And doing.
I agree, but why, why are we walking away from the ZBA?
So the storage on.
He doesn't want to pursue it.
That's no different than the commercial storage you got down the road. Someone could rent that and put a boat in it.
Yep.
Or, uh, an antique car or something, that's considered that self-storage, which meets the commercial use. All that, so you could actually rent.
Yeah, that's the, you know.
But, well, because the accessory use structure in the back doesn't, there's no residence above, so you would have the accessory. So that's where that little.
But just think about it though, John, you're, you're a residence up here and there's a, it's commercial somebody down below.
If they wanted to rent that space for storage up, they wanted to rent a commercial space as a separate lease, they would have a right to, no matter different than. You would have a right to rent that space and travel over there and use it.
Yeah, right, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying now. Think about it, John, I, I, right, because I got a car, I work in a car. I work after work, so I work late in the night on my, my hot rod that I'm building. And I got residents upstairs that are not too happy with me banging and grinding and doing all kinds of, uh, stuff, working the, working the, in that garage just right below me.
All right, one of the big things we focus on is sound. Sound's the biggest thing we have to deal with, especially when it's commercial, residential. So there's a new system there. We used to use the GIPV, but now they have a system where they actually take three quarter inch, uh, Vantec with a rubber piece in the middle and three quarter of Vantec and we insulate the heck out of it. Sound is our number one concern. We can always just sound side by side by side. Top and bottom, it's huge. It's our number one concern and we don't have any issue.
And there's a requirement for an R thirty insulation along with that between the two units.
And the double five Hs and, you know, it's just.
Find a, my, the reason I keep on going back to ZBA, we're trying to find a way to make this happen the right way. I think the ZBA would be open to this as well. They would have to see the logic of, of doing, having the residents use these garages rather than the attached garages. That makes all kinds of sense.
I, I, and I agree with you except, A, it is not the board's job to go to the ZBA on, on behalf of an applicant. And B, the applicant has already stated, he doesn't want to go to the ZBA.
No, because I'm looking.
He would rent. And he meets, and he meets, and he meets the requirement in zoning and your site review regulations if he does what he proposed. So why would he go to the ZBA to try to do something?
Just hits one of the rules, it's just a worse outcome.
I lived that, that's my life.
No. I work for the government.
No, I, Ron, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, but.
We're all agreeing, that's the problem. We can't, we can't go, we want to go.
Right, we're, we, I think, well, principle, we all agree, the problem is we have a regulation that says our mixed use is a commercial.
Now, yeah, you, you know, uh, with respect to going to, we don't actually have to go to ZBA. The way we could address this, we're going forward in the future is the planning board could propose a zoning amendment that would address this issue going forward. That doesn't help us in this application and it's up to the applicant to decide how to resolve the issue, but.
In that definition.
We could.
In that definition, you could add, um, accessory use, then it would all of a sudden be allowed. It'd be in that definition, so then it goes away.
So the, so the board can do something with the zoning board, but it's not going to help him.
This year.
On, on this year on this application. We're going to have to come up with a zoning ordinance, put it out there as a warrant article and, you know, let it fly.
On this first thought, I spoke to John immediately because I knew this could be an issue and, and we really had to eye to eye talk about it and really figure it out. So we, we, we sort of thought this was going to be where it was and, uh, but even though we knew it, it, it isn't ideal. We're talking about, he knew what was going on, you know, but zoning, it was all zoning right there.
And that was the thing of zone, the two leases technically make it legal.
Yep.
But Bron's worried about someone that doesn't live above rents the space and then there's an issue because of incompatibility. But that incompatibility is what's written in zoning.
Yep.
So the commercial building in the front underneath could make noise too, which is underneath that residential unit. Just like if they, whether they rent the garage or the whole office space in the front.
I, that is no different as like, you could have a bar below you on the first floor there that's like. Until two AM and.
Yeah, we're smart, well.
But that is.
We can put business hours on, on commercials, so we can limit the hours.
We can, but I don't want to be like a nanny.
Well, I think, I think if you talk about mixed use, where you talk about it, it's going to be, it's going to be.
Well, actually, we do need to discuss that as far as.
We're both together. I think Jeff, we're just parking a car, why, why are we getting hung up on this?
What's the difference over?
The rules kill us.
Who owns the car? Right, yeah, and but we've also come, I think, to the conclusion that, uh, there's really no way to get around the zoning.
Well, there is. He could do two leases, one for a commercial space underneath and then the residential above to the same person. And technically they're a, they're running a self-storage underneath and that, that would make.
But if you're.
John, John, to that, to that end, can we specify the rent?
But Andy, but Andy brought up, if you're requiring the resident to rent that, then it becomes part of the residence. Cause it's a requirement.
You know, it's an option, but if. Make it like a dollar a month or something like that, it'll happen.
Well, yeah.
So we can, so technically it's included in your residential rent, but for an extra dollar, you can rent this commercial space, which is going to be.
Exactly.
Your rent is, uh, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. If you want the garage space, it's nine hundred dollars a month. That'll probably happen.
The, but it would be, it makes it, as a, I know it's semantics.
It is a really sticky wicket.
Yeah. That's, that's the planning board figuring out how to get around the zoning.
Yeah, and I'm like that.
I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that role.
But, but they, having them back garages.
I want to.
If you.
I, I know.
But if you have the back garages be completely accessory use for each of them dwellings and those are commercial garages for storage, whether they rent them for boat or old car and stuff like that. Then that's all legal, but Ron had an issue with that because that meets zoning, but he doesn't solve use.
I don't even want to rent them out. I mean.
You can put all your equipment in there and have your office in the front.
I never know.
Yeah, so.
Which is similar to what Dan does at his rent.
Speaking of. Which is appropriate because it aligns with an industrial use. You don't have a residential space tied to it.
Correct.
So I, you know, because, um, yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Now, I, I shouldn't. That, you understand that if you had people that had garage space in rear garage that were residents in the building. And you had the commercial space in the front, there would be nothing to conclude that there was an agreement between the commercial parking space under their residence and the resident who owns the parking space out, that they could. the resident who owns the parking space out, that they could.
They'd have the option to choose either one.
Well, now, they'd have to have an agreement that says, I agree that you can use my garage, and I can use your garage, and then they are parking.
Well, all the lease says you can, you, this is a tie to your space, but you could use the other one.
You're, you're, I know.
Playing the game.
I know.
You're.
It's a slippery slope.
You're in a very.
I, I, I think John's answer, those residential, the residential, the garages in the back, the accessory use that are going to be the residential garages, the other garages is part of the commercial use, so those commercial spaces in the front, that's clean, there's no.
It's clean.
Back and forth, I know, I understand Ron's concept, but I think going that route is twisting zoning into what you.
Yeah, I know, I, I know. And I'm uncomfortable with, like I said, with that role also, I, and um, so I think we could attack this going forward to try to get a change to zoning ordinance, but on this particular.
But I could see the argument on the other side, if you start allowing accessory structures underneath, are you really backdooring um, multifamily?
Yep.
So. I mean, I can see that come up when people are talking.
Well, if the voters approve that, fine, but at this point in time.
I'm just saying, I can see the argument the other way.
Right, but that's not our decision to make.
The commercial, you have to have a reasonable commercial, then it becomes a this, like, what I see happening is somebody puts like an ATM in the front piece and calls it a commercial use, and you've occupied 10 square feet of.
Hey, Steve.
There's a lot of.
While we've been arguing about this, you've uh, been conspicuously silent here, did you?
He smirks once in a while.
He's eating popcorn laughing at us.
Yeah.
Figure it out, that's what he's doing.
I have no strong feelings about this particular point, I have a separate one once this one is concluded.
Okay. All right, so, so as part of the conditions is that the parking for residents would be in the detached garage.
To that, then I guess I'd want to have a place for visitor parking somewhere.
In front of the detached.
Somewhere. You know.
Well, as this is shown.
They can settle the parking in front of the eight.
That is a travel.
These ones will be needed.
The commercial vehicle parking that's at the end, what, what, I mean, what was your idea there?
You know, it's um, there's a lot of people with campers and uh, motorhomes that'll look for places, I mean, you, you do cars, and, and everybody does cars, so much, everybody's got an extra car, everybody has, everybody has a toy, and they, they're always looking for a spot that they can place it reasonably, and um, we, we think that's a, a good opportunity.
So you were planning on renting spaces?
Yeah, oh yeah, you met my son, the CPA, listen, he watches every, he spays out every penny.
You see the whole time, like, uh, storage units, they have places where you can.
Well.
Well, some neighborhood covenants don't allow you to do it, I looked at a house in New England, hey, I couldn't park my boat in my front yard, I would like.
Very common, as a boat storage is huge.
Right.
And that's why the storage down the road, they, best is they can build them, they're selling them.
Right.
But you know, if those spaces, let's say, typical house has two cars, you got guests on somewhere, you got a guest, you got a guest.
If I had to give those up, that would, I said, Fox, and I don't have an issue with that, and that would.
Talking about.
Yep.
Front of a, a special, then got to find a visitor. Got to find visitor parking spaces someplace.
I think certainly as you, we have enough room, as you come into the right, I could put some visitor stalls.
Yeah, something. Maybe, maybe beside bus, beside the garage.
I think there ought to be one visitor parking spot for every unit.
What's, what is it called, or what's the code, what's the uh, statute for parking?
But it gives us, it gives us authority.
You know what's funny, we uh, we have a project in Rochester, we average 2.1 people per unit, I'm dead serious, and in Portsmouth, it's 1.8. You don't, you don't realize how people live nowadays, they want space, and they want two or three bedrooms, they don't use it, but they, they're all working from home.
Yeah.
We, we calculate it, because we have a couple hundred units right now, we're working on 500, not what you think it is.
But, but for apartments, it's reasonable that the residents will have two cars, because typically you'd have two people.
It is.
That, that, I mean, I, I'm, I'm a single resident, and I have two cars, so, I mean, that, that, I think that's reasonable for each of the apartments will have, so there's, there's the space in the garage, right? Uh, so now, it's a question of if they have visitors, now.
What comes.
So if.
That you have, you have, you can put it in front, you can put that parking against the building.
In the site review regulations, they do have for the commercial size of the building, for the use, the number of parking spaces needed, and then for the residential, they list a thing, it's all in the site review regulations.
If you eliminate these parking right here, attached into that building right there, now you've done it. You've given them, if I could do this, I take the building, the parking is commercial to unit with the garages, take that.
Flexibility to the side.
That.
It does, it does.
It's right there, now I've covered it.
I, I just think it's.
Thank you for helping us solve this, though, but that's, that's the way to go, that'll, that'll solve everything now, so.
You tell them.
Going to have two spots in front of them, so there'll be a total of four, so everybody that gets a garage or a apartment, there's not only a garage, but two storage spaces over front.
And that gives you a fourth total parking space.
Oh, so you're going to move the travelway against the commercial building?
Yep.
And then put parking spots in front of the garage? The rear garage? Right. Works for me.
Actually, what I wanted to raise was around the commercial parking, so maybe this is the right moment for that. Um, so, let's see, um, looks like from the rendering that some of the vehicles might be very large, I just wonder if there's enough turning radius that if, if every one of these parking spaces is full, that um, a large vehicle could actually maneuver to get into each of these spaces, and uh, secondarily to that, um, I wonder if the most awkward space or two should be a uh, a greenway island, perhaps, if you can't use it as parking.
I'll tell you, Steve, as a person who manages commercial spaces, there's nothing more infuriating than putting in greenway islands, because if you got to plow them, it's a nightmare.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, then.
Steve did bring up a good point, about the fire chief is going to want uh, fire truck access going around, so on some of the other commercial buildings, they've shown like the turning radius of the fire truck going around, that'd be outside those parking spaces to make sure that that fire access goes around the building, I see you got a tractor trailer truck, so it looks like you could show that it meets those.
Yeah, this is actually a W.
Concern you've had, Steve?
Larger than a fire truck.
Right, exactly, and if those commercial, back to trailer trucks can drive around.
You're going to be able to get a fire truck access.
If you, but I think that was the concern Steve was bringing up.
If you move the travelway up against the commercial.
Interior space.
Parking in front of the.
24 and 15.
Is that going to be a problem? Respect to.
Perfect.
That's something they would have to show as part of their design.
Oh, then, was, was it parking for the commercial space? Parking for the what?
It's still in front of the building.
Fine, yeah.
I was talking about moving this space here, Ron? Right.
Across.
Across.
In front of the garages.
Right.
So they all still have parking.
So they, yeah, you could.
But my point, once again, is if that's a commercial space parking.
No, that's the.
No, that's residential space parking.
Right, so they could park in front of their own garage.
Yep.
Which means this 24 foot travelway moves from the front of this detached garage to the front. Oh, the.
Correct. And looking, and based on, like, the, the, I'm assuming it's probably a 10 foot sidewalk around the front of it, um, wrapping around, you're going, ultimately going to end up with a large enough space, I mean, I know they have to show it, but you're going to have enough space, they're still going to be able to get a tractor trailer around there without any problem.
Yeah.
Yep. To clarify on my point, okay, so you can get a tractor trailer around, so the commercial vehicle parking on the left of the image here, is there enough turning radius to maneuver to back in or pull out or whatever, if there are other vehicles in those spaces, without getting into, you know, do you have enough space to turn?
So on your new plan, if you show the parking in front of the building towards the back, just show that those trucks could go around between those parking spaces in the front building.
Well, I think what, what Steve is talking about is if you have a um, like a person with a, you know, 36 foot RV or 40 foot RV, is there enough room for them to, to pull in front of the space and then be able to back into those parking spaces?
I think the commercial space is on the end, yes. Yeah, if they were in front of the garages, no.
In front, would be in front. It was down here, though, they, they got to be shorter.
On the north end.
Yeah, they have to be shorter, I think they're too deep, I think they have to be shorter.
I, I, that's a valid.
Parking can go into those setbacks, that building setback line, so they could go a little closer to the property line for their, their parking and stuff, because that's, doesn't have to meet the building setback line.
Yep.
So I think another option we, we also could do, uh, John, is I could also make those angled parking for.
Yeah, that would do it, that, that would give quite a bit of space.
Back out at an angle.
Yeah.
Up in the middle space there.
Yeah, the, I mean, the other piece that I would, I would suggest is that based on your rendering, it looks like your asphalt wraps around to the back, on the sides, I would end it at the front corner. That way, you don't have to worry about that push, you're not going to have to deal with um, you know, your, your drip ads off the angle of the roof there on your corner end onto an asphalt walkway, where that's an area where you just plow right up along the edge of your building, you don't have to worry about it.
Have a, a roof that'll be running down to the, so that we don't.
Yeah.
That's the gable, shouldn't be anyone.
I've also been looking at the landscape plan, and I wanted to compliment you on your selection of trees, crab apples, pears, things like that. Um, but also, the, some of, and I don't like to, I'd rather you not remove these, but um, there are some trees uh, that reduce, that are between the building and the commercial parking that uh, reduce the, the space for maneuver. If that makes sense.
I didn't follow you on that.
I, I didn't understand that comment either, Steve.
Sure, let me try that again, um, so first of all, I, I, I like your choice and placement of trees.
Thanks.
Um, but there are, uh, some of the trees are between your commercial building and the very long commercial parking spaces on the left.
Okay, yep.
So that, that reduces somewhat. Yeah, that reduces somewhat your, the space to maneuver for parking into those large spaces.
Okay, certainly.
We relocate those, and I think by, and the parking, I think would be, be better.
John, we can run that parking into the setback, there's no issue with that.
John. He was questioning that they could run the, the parking on those commercial back into the setback.
Yeah, the, the setback is for a building setback, if you go on our definition, driveways and parking areas can be in that setback area by our definition, that's what's allowed.
Can, and, and this is a different point, but residentially, they can be up against the property line, as far as you're concerned, the driveway, and there's maybe five feet off the line.
There's exemption on structures, so let's go to zoning, on the exemption on structures, they exempt parking in driveways as far as the setbacks go.
If I were doing residential, I'd do it a side load driveway.
It doesn't say whether it's commercial or residential, they just talk about um, on structures. Okay, so, on structures, it says, um, these, these following things are exempt from setback purposes, and it says signs, stone walls, septic system, driveways, sidewalks, and parking lots. So, and that's rated in the zoning, under the stuff where that's exempt, so um, is the only time it's different, is the greenbelt buffer is a thing where you're not supposed to have parking in that greenbelt buffer, but just so far behind that greenbelt buffer that you've got no problem at all.
Yep. I think you've helped us tune this plan up quite a bit, I, I can't thank you enough, I know, obviously it's good feedback.
Well, we're, we wrestle sometimes not only the zoners, but sometimes our own regulations, but we're able to uh, waive the subdivision in site review regulations, we have no power to issue any kind of variance from zoning ordinance. That has to be done by the ZBA, so. All right. Other questions, issues?
The parking that you have, the commercial stuff in the front, there's a requirement of one space, but what was it, three, 3000 square feet of the building in the front, in the lower commercial section?
I think you got more than enough, but if you could just do a little math formula to show that you meet that minimum requirement, that as a board, you guys have required.
Right, right, somewhere on the plan, it needs to reflect that you did the calculation per the regulation. Demonstrate that you have.
I had under parking calculations on the parking plan, we were.
Oh, you did.
Commercial.
You got them?
Space.
Oh, you got them?
One per 300 square feet.
Right.
By, by, so we, the.
What sheet is that?
Oh, we're providing 20.
Yeah, which sheet is that?
Uh, parking and pavement. Sheet two.
Sheet two, so there is in there.
On the side.
I didn't.
Yep, you got the parking, yeah, there, there. Total required, 28, total. All right, so that takes care of that.
It was assumed the internal and external.
Okay, uh.
Putting inside the garages as part of the parking. Well, they're including that? That's, that in his calculation.
Okay. So lengthy, but beneficial discussion. So, I'm gonna uh, we're done, then I'm going to open up, yeah, that's what I was going to do. Uh, then I'm going to open up the uh, public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that, which is to make a statement, you can come up and uh, take a place at the table, state their name and address, uh, people can state their name and address and participate but via Microsoft Teams, if they would raise their hand, there's a little button there for doing that, and uh, and we will acknowledge them and let them speak, if you're participating by phone, you can uh, make comments uh, by unmuting your phone, and that's uh, star six. All right. Uh, there, there's no one that's raised their hands uh, via the Teams application. Uh, one last time, if you'd like to comment by phone, uh, then unmute your phone by star six. Okay, hearing no comments, then uh, I will close the public hearing. Okay, so the question, one, one question that uh, we need to ask is, and I think I'm pretty satisfied, that i- is whether we think that this needs to go out to a third-party review, uh, although I forgot to ask, underground utilities, there is, there isn't a utility box somewhere along signature that you're tying into?
Yes, the upper holes will be underground.
Okay.
Um, that's kind of, the location is kind of floating pending the utility design for signature drive.
Okay.
That will be underground.
Uh, so the question is, would be whether this is need to go to a third-party review, teenage, however, given the the ponds, the fire retention ponds, the wet pond, those were already reviewed as part of the design for the subdivision and for the development, and uh, they were designed to hold the runoff from the building and the parking lot, and AOT now is going to have to be engaged in all this to verify then that what's going into those as, in accordance, the water going into those ponds, uh, you know, that were previously permitted, that, you know, that, that, there's, those are still valid for use, uh, I don't see a need to go. Personally, I, I don't know how I'm going to support you. Okay, everybody shaking their heads, no, so that, uh, that takes care of that, so we there were a number of things that we discussed, now that we've come through the zoning issue, uh, we're not requiring party, there's a few minor changes that need to be made to the plans illumination, the question is, well, I guess, where do you want to go from this, I mean, we have two options, we can try to hammer our way through all of this with, with extensive modifications to the notice of decision, or you go back, we continue this, and you go back and make the changes to the plans, uh, obviously going to have to address the parking issue, what you've decided, so we're, what are your thoughts on where we go?
I guess for me personally, I find the changes minor, um, I don't think it would take me much time to do so. Off to the next month, or if it would be for the next workshop, and you can I could turn this around fairly quickly.
I could turn this around fairly quickly.
How quick?
Uh, within a week.
All right, so if you could turn this around in a week for revised materials, we'd have to go with the new material submission restriction in fifteen days. Barbara's right that we have gone with basically the week before, so that would be seventy. And you got everything to us, then, you know, in a week, then we'd be having time for the meeting.
Just want to make sure you guys are planning on doing your subdivision and set review, um, in two weeks. And I think you can mix this in, but I just wanted.
I would, I would. Right, right. Yeah, right. But honestly, tho- those discussions may take some period of time. I, I don't know that we can get.
I think you beat this one up pretty good. This should go.
Right, this should go. Yeah.
Yeah. But I just wanted to make sure you.
Right, right. No, 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 that's a good point, John, but I, I think that, uh, if they're willing to continue this, make the changes that we've talked about and come back to the board. I, I think you're right. We, we beat this up pretty bit. Well, that can be expedited, uh, discussion and action on the application.
Sue may probably try and get this right to the front of the.
Right.
Yeah, I would put this in the front. That way you do your discussion on your changes afterwards. That way they're not paying people to sit there and wait for you to go through the discussions on your changes.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I would classify the, the, uh, the discussion of the regulation changes as other business.
Yeah, that should be.
Before the board.
We're actually gonna put it on the agenda that you were gonna be having discussions on performing zoning and site review.
Right, so, so would that be an action item or would that be other business? Well, it doesn't matter. If the first action item is, is this particular application, the second one could be working on the regular. Yeah. Well. That's an action. I, I know this is an action item. The question is, yeah, you're right. We're, we could not vote on any changes to the regulations because we said, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna review them, hash them out, make any changes. Then they gotta go to a public hearing.
And that would have to be scheduled.
And that would have to be scheduled. And then, so that's not gonna get done. There's not gonna be any voting on regulation changes next week.
Right, so print of order, print agreement, that this is an action item for the first part of the meeting.
Thank you. I agree. It ought to be the first action item of the month. Yep.
I don't have massive confidence in that to be expedited in brief review, but yes.
I don't have confidence in what?
It will be expedited in brief review because.
Of this point?
Sometimes we.
After the colonoscopy we just gave you, so I would hope we would, we would be quick about it. Well, you know, I do have, uh, confidence that Scott has carefully notes and, uh, is, is aiming to please the board.
Stay a hundred percent on track next time.
Okay, no, I, I don't have any faith that we stay on track, but I, I do have faith that he is listening. I, despite what he's done, he has obviously been listening. He's probably going home and have a drink after listening to us, but.
So that was to March fifteenth?
Uh, yeah, so would you, uh, like to request a continuance to March fifteenth with a, uh, with a, uh, material submission date? Because we should specify what that's gonna be, uh, March eight.
March forty day.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I hear a motion to continue this, uh, application to March fifteenth with a document submission date of March? Not hearing, make, yeah, okay. Well, I would just make the motion to continue this application to twenty-three, twenty-six point fifty-seven, RC twenty-two to March fifteenth with a document submittal date of March eight.
Second.
All right, motion made by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp to continue this to March fifteenth. Document submission by. Okay, vote call, um, Donna Masut, Ron Allen. Steve Diamond. And Jeff. And Ashley continued. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
That was fun.
Yeah. You realize by the time we get done, the president will. Will you be underst- be able to understand what he's saying anyway?
The, the fun part's gonna be when the Democrats and the Republicans all try to fight about what he said and didn't say after.
Now they get a rebuttal from the Democrats. That's what I'm saying.
Hey, guys, I, I mean, really, I, I thought I got a good discussion, you know? Unfortunately, our hands are sort of bound by what the zoning ordinance says, but I think we got to the right place for it to.
I, I think you totally did.
Fast and loose with the zoning.
There is a process. Take us a year to change it. There is a process. As an obligation, we get, every year we add, do we wish to propose any zoning, zoning changes? And I think we just came up.
Yep.
Regulations.
Okay, oh boy, for, for like the thirteenth time, uh, uh, so are there any reports from other committees? Hearing none, is there any unfinished business? All kinds, but none that I can think of. So other business that may probably come before the board and for the upcoming time, we're back to discussing the, uh, the private roads again. Uh, so, uh.
You guys all got the new policy and understood what was the policy?
And I saw that letter from the, from, well, the ten percent.
Yeah, so the first, the first one up, right, is, uh, this is on Gillette Road. So we have a couple of things that, first off, we see that there was a letter written, uh, by the person.
Yeah, it was Mary Jane.
Mary, yeah. Mary Jane. Promise, okay. And saying that they were willing to commit the eight thousand dollars, ten percent of the value of the improvements to the property for the road. I also read an email, uh, that came from Mark Morrow, the road agent. It says, listen, at, right now, the road surface is in decent shape. The, the moving forward, the real thing here is to start cutting the trees down that are precluding it being widened to the sixteen feet. Um, which to me sounds, uh, like a good idea. If the road surface is settled, okay, now it's the case of it's the width. It's not the surface.
Yeah, so where this is an advisory to the selectmen and then to recommended by the road agent. Just as a board, you could say that you've put the road agent's determination of this to make. There's a couple of things that this is what the new policy would have to be that the selectmen want, but that would get it, this process to get it on the selectman's agenda. Or that would, this one kind of started halfway in the middle and that's why it's.
But as far as the board, we simply make a recommendation to the select board. So what, what, whatever other information they need in accordance with their new policy, that's not this board's.
Correct.
So I think that we could send the standard letter that says we have no objection, but we support, uh, the, the use of, uh, ten percent of the value uh, contributed towards the road upgrade and follow the road agent recommendations that it be used to treat.
And then we'll have to make sure we have the other information the selectmen need for their meeting, which is there's a couple of little things. This, what happened is this got started before the policy change and they've been waiting, so.
What else do they need from us?
For you guys, nothing. That's just my recommendation.
Okay, yeah, I'm just saying. Yeah, that's between the select board and the applicant. That's not for us. So I'm part of us now. You're a tween.
Yeah, not, not until the vote. Right now, you're kind of stuck in the tween like it says. It's almost like being a teenager and adult.
No, I'm out.
Or, or what do they call it? When you're ten, I'm an eleven, before you be actually become a teenager.
Yeah.
A tweener.
Yeah. Okay, so does anybody have any of your?
Whoa, Steve, you just got big.
Uh, yeah, you used to be about like this and now you're like this.
Zoom does funny things.
The new policy says the road agent will consult with a road association if appropriate or the possible, or reasonably possible. He's not the road agent, not the road agent, but the applicant, property owner. So, and this is why this one's a little bit different. So when this would happen different than how it will happen in the future is that the road agent was kind of the idea guy for how to spend the eight thousand dollars. And that's okay. Again, like John said, this is kind of in between. In the future, how the policy is written is the applicant will be responsible with presenting as part of the application by department heads, what they will do. In this case, how they would spend the eight thousand dollars. Now, the road agent during his review is expected to look at that.
Comment.
The road and say, hey, yeah, you know, that's pretty good. Why spend eight thousand dollars?
But why, why wouldn't the applicant consult with the road agent before they submitted something to the select board?
Because it's a tremendous amount of time and effort on behalf of the department heads to, to come up with these ideas. And it's not their responsibility to.
Right, it's a private, that's exactly right.
And so.
Yeah, but you're.
This is on the property owner. The property owner is looking to develop this property. There's restrictions in place for access and they need to present the town what they intend to do.
But the road agent's gonna get engaged anyway, right? When the select board receives the proposed.
But, but Jeff, you know that there's a difference between, say, a design review, a site plan review. Where somebody comes in for a design review and is looking to ask the planning board to opine about X, Y and Z. It's, it's a burden on the planning board to go in to, to come up with all these ideas and, oh, think about this, think about that versus here's the application. He specifically. Buy the recommendation on comment. That's what we're looking for, department head. So that Mark has a complete application that provides all the details of what they're proposing. And he takes his expertise to go spend not an unreasonable amount of time reviewing it and providing comment. And that's.
And to support that, Connor, I think if there's an active road association on the road, azoning with that should be the responsibility of the property owner.
Agreed.
Not the road agent.
Agreed. And that's what we've encouraged them to do in the road maintenance agreement. I think the requirement for road maintenance.
Okay, so on this particular one, I think everybody agreed, standard letter that says two things. We support the applicant contributed ten percent of the value towards road upgrades and we support the road agents. Should we take a vote over?
They probably would make a cleanup.
All right, so I make a motion that we do just that. We, we send a letter to the select board saying we have no objection. Uh, we agree with the applicant paying ten percent of value of the improvements and with the road agents' recommendations.
So before you actually vote, Mary Jane's online. I know she wants to speak.
Okay.
So I guess you could give her the opportunity. She'll probably be happy with the decision, so she might not want to say anything.
Well, yeah, well, well, there is no, a- as I recall, no formal public hearing process for that. But yes, I agree. Uh, Mary Jane, if you wish to make a comment, the, the board is all ears.
The only thing I'd like to say is that we met with the road agent this afternoon and discussed that the money would be better allocated to remove some trees to start to widen the road. So I understand that it's our obligation to come up with the idea and it was discussed with Mark and we are totally willing to spend the eight thousand dollars on removing eight thousand dollars worth of trees and getting that road widened.
Oh, okay. So as you just heard, it's the board's intent to, you know, we're asked by the select board to give our opinion on all this and our opinion will be, yes, we support the building permit, uh, with, or we don't object to the building permit with the caveat that A, you made the contribution, you said you've been willing to make it, B, it gets spent in accordance with, uh, the recommendations of the road. And yours.
And you have children.
That's my husband.
Oh, is it?
Even worse.
Good thing.
Well, you know.
She has children.
My oldest child.
So I got a more of a directive on that, uh, maintenance agreement thing. So if you could set up a time to come in and visit with me, we can go over that to make sure that you have that all online for the selectmen moving forward too.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Uh, before.
Anything else?
Yes. I do.
Go ahead, Steve.
Um, so i- it's probably time to make sure that, um, the current version of the plastics and private road agreement is on the website. There's three different versions, none of which are the current one. And it wasn't, I wondered about from the road agent's letter, is, he said, um, costs are not to exceed ten percent. I wasn't sure if he was clear that it has to be at least ten percent. Um, and he also had the question about the fifty feet um, from their driveway. He wasn't entirely clear about that.
By understanding and how I took it from what the stuff was, was that eight thousand dollars? Mark was saying, should they stop at fifty feet or should they be going farther down the road? I think that's what his question was. Um, and so depending on what they had to take out for trees, do they even get that far? It costs quite a bit of money to have someone take down trees when you got a narrow road and you got houses and stuff all by. It's not like dropping trees in the middle of the woods, you know, so. Um, but it's up to the applicant to get a price on what it's gonna be to do with them trees to show that it's gonna be the eight thousand dollars that they would submit to the select board as part of their stuff. And then the, the road agent, I guess, is technically the one that would go out and look to make sure that whatever was proposed was completed before I could give them a CO because it's written that work has to be done before CO, not before the building permits issued.
I guess technically that's up to the select board, uh, to make that decision.
I, I, we kind of have some conversations with Connor because I'm trying to follow exactly how it is to make sure we implement it correctly too. So I'm trying to explain to you what I've been trying to learn and trying to get all in board too. Um, I think these first three that we got in front of us right now because they kind of come in a limbo. Um, I think we're all gonna get a learning curve, even the select board when they meet on this. So it's, you know, it's, it's we call it, growing pains, I guess, because, you know, you made a change.
Cool, maybe we should go down the motion.
Second.
Okay. Then we'll do, uh, we'll call, who made the motion? Did I?
You did, yeah.
Okay. Then, uh, roll call vote. Steve Diamond. Andy Knapp.
Hi.
Brand eye.
Howard.
Okay, then that takes care of that one.
Okay, the next one, they're actually working on what they want to do for the road to try to make it work and they're gonna be presenting something so they're not here tonight for trying to get this.
So.
The planning board.
So the next one.
So the one after that is.
Not ready for prime time.
So the one after that was the guy that wanted to bring his house up and do the walkout placement.
Yes.
And there was a narrow paved road coming down to them and his name is Ed and he's actually online here too. Um, he hasn't proposed any road changes. I mean, um, what they plan on doing to the road, um, because of it already being paved. But it's narrow. The, the travel way isn't sixteen feet, but it has shoulders that I don't think quite meets the twenty feet. So that's, you know, it'd probably be like widening the road or something like that, but up to them to come up with it, which they haven't done yet, but he's still online because he wanted to have the discussion about moving forward. And the last meeting, you guys felt almost like you should have moved it forward, but the other one, um, kind of hedged back because you wanted to see the policy.
Okay. Well, we also said that this is on the, uh, this is a, this is a corner lot.
Yeah, it comes down golf course.
It, it, it comes down golf course, which is wider and you'd have, I mean, the whole issue here is emergency access. Right? I mean, that's why we work the about the, the width and the conditions of these roads that if apparatus needs to respond to an emergency, they can do that. So in reality, Eagle Drive wasn't, this, even though it's listed as the address as being on Eagle Drive, they are also cornering on.
And I think golf course was the one that had the fourteen feet of pavement coming down that Mark referenced. It is, uh.
Right, so that already, that's a paved road that also provides access. And so that the, the issue here is they're not, uh, even though more people potentially could live in the house, the fact is that they're putting a foundation under an existing house, if I correct. Correct. And so they're not actually enlarging the footprint. And so they're not actually enlarging the footprint at all.
I didn't know if you, Ed's online, so if you had any questions for him, you guys.
All right, what do you guys have for questions? What do you?
Well, you can let him say what he's doing. I don't know what to do.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for uh, listening to us. Uh, our intent here really is to stabilize our home. It's on peers, as you might imagine, some of, if not all of the lake houses are. The peers are starting to shift and in order to stabilize the house, we thought that a, a foundation would be our best alternative and uh, gain some storage. And I'm eager to hear whatever uh, the planning board has to offer.
Well, that's actually a question and uh, and that with some discussion as to what the basement uh, that you're putting in was going to be utilized for. Are you adding additional uh, living space or is that simply going to be storage?
Uh, a portion is storage. Um, it's currently a three-bedroom residence. And uh, I think what we anticipated was uh, using the basement as more living space and moving one of the bedrooms to downstairs.
Which puts it under category three by the new road policy. That's why they got to go through the hearing process and say what they want to upgrade the road. They can't meet that sixteen two zero by the regulations that just adopted.
Uh, this is my wife Shelley to my right and between the two of us, we were, we were eager to hear what the board thought of uh, uh, waiver process.
Hey Ed, just, just so you know, we can't see either one of you because the camera's focused between you.
We got two shoulders.
There you go.
Hey!
Hey!
We had Steve Diamond to your right and.
I think the new, the new uh, policy looks way better. It's much clearer, much more useful. It's great.
Okay, so under the new policy, what?
They haven't proposed, they haven't proposed any upgrades to the road, but according to Mark's inspection out there, it didn't meet the sixteen two and two.
Right.
So that's where the quandary is a little bit. You're not recommending any upgrades because you don't have any recommendation or proposal for an upgrade. That's kind of where, like I said, these, these three started before the whole policy thing so they can continue. This is what the third meeting in front of you, I think that this was brought forward.
Yep. Right, but this ties to the conversation that we had about taking essentially a camp and turning it into a residential dwelling.
Well, there is increase of living space underneath, therefore it comes under category three.
Right.
So they have to comply with the whole thing about meeting that road upgrade. Now, if it was under category two, they would have to go through the hearing process, but there wouldn't be any road upgrade requirements. So um, they're in the position to where they would have to say, here's what we're planning to do with the road at that ten percent. And then, then that's when you would make your recommendation to the selectmen. Um, they were hoping not to do any work to the road and they wanted to talk to the selectmen about it. But technically speaking, the selectmen's needs comments from the planning board before they can go to the select board and be heard. So.
But under the new policy, they are trying to submit an application, correct?
But they have an application of the old one, but they didn't propose any road upgrades and that's what.
I understand, but.
Waiver, then the waiver is in the policy.
But that's the.
Specifically asked for a waiver. It would be with the planning board as well. But they lay out to apply for a waiver and the point they would lay out why they feel like a waiver is warranted. Have they explained the justice? And the planning board, when the planning board reviews a waiver request, presumably the planning board would opine whether the planning board's concurrents that a waiver is warranted, given the circumstances.
Right.
Just like the select board. So I think if you can, and I think you asked what the planning board thought about a waiver. And I guess I would assume that the planning board would want to know why a waiver was being requested in order to render any of the waiver.
True, I think that's a good comment. What is the construction cost with that? What was the value of the construction that you were proposing? I can't remember now off the top of my head.
Sixty-four thousand.
We're talking sixty-four thousand.
And Mark's thing was it was pavement that was only a few years old, fourteen foot wide and has shoulders, but it didn't quite meet that sixteen two inch. So I guess that for that six thousand dollars, sixty-four hundred bucks, they would have to say, here's what we're willing to widen the road coming down or widen the shoulder or something.
Well, I was just trying to understand the process here of where we're at. If you're suggesting that they're here to get our input prior to submitting a request for a waiver to select board, which will have to come back to the select board. Doesn't sound like we're going to dispense with this one tonight because there's still a process to go to. This would come back to the.
Well, they could say because they got the fourteen foot of pavement that's only a few years old and it has shoulders, that they don't want to have to build the road up to sixteen feet and then you guys could weigh in on that discussion.
I understand, but I'm saying they're still going through the process. They have to submit an application. They may be getting input from us as to whether they want to have a waiver as part of that. But, you know, we're not going to be voting to send a letter out on this particular one tonight. This is.
They got a, they got a, yeah, they got an application that came forward before this change came about. So they did have an application in front of the board. This is why it's the third meeting in a row. It's been in front of you.
And Jeff, to be clear, the, under section three, category three, uh, applications. It's a statutory requirement.
No, I understand.
And so they have to come here for the select board. With the information available, if the planning board is sending comments, sending comments to the select board.
Connor, sorry to interrupt. We're having trouble hearing you. Uh, Andy, you're shuffling a little too much paper. Could you start over please, Andy? I don't know, Connor?
Yeah, I was just saying that the planning board could, at the planning board's discretion, render comment based on the available information to check off the part of the statutory process that requires review and comment by the planning board. Uh, and so like John mentioned, there were three applications that came in, but with a policy change, all three wanted to wait to utilize the new policy. And so it's, it's kind of a hybrid of the two because we have some application materials under the old policy, uh, and they're trying to apply the new policy.
Well, a key done though was you were talking about then, if they don't want to put the money forward, then they're going to have to ask for a waiver. And I thought you implied then it was going to have to come to the board if they want a waiver.
I, I think it's the intent of the policy that if an applicant is asking for a waiver, then that request is reviewed by the planning board and the planning board's commenting on that. All I was saying about the waiver is I heard, uh, I'm sorry, is it Friedman?
Ed.
And say, ask um, the planning board, you're interested in your opinion about a waiver. That's the, the only information I had that they were thinking about.
I can answer that. I could try to address that a little bit. So the, the phrasing of the new select board's policy uh, is something to the effect of uh, essentially if the, if the personal burden upon you of the finances outweighs the public benefit, is the way I, I, I interpreted that part of it. So it's, it's saying essentially, is there no reason in your particular instance, in your particular circumstances to burden you with that expense? Because there's no public benefit in this, in this situation.
I think that's part of the zoning board application if they disagree with the selectman's decision.
Right.
That, that. No, that's the waiver process. So the waiver process lays out five criteria uh, that the applicant shows in making a waiver request. It mirrors the variance request with the comment. That's where the, 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 the appeal is separate from a waiver. The appeal by statute is to the zoning board. So the select board turns the waiver process in the policy, uh, which goes in, the decision is made by the select. There's a separate appeal process required by statute, which would go to the zoning board. And there's no established criteria for the appeal to the zoning board. Uh, the, the appeal to the zoning board is simply uh, based on the language in six seventy-four forty-one, which is limited.
All right, let, let's say that a waiver is requested. I don't think it's been formally requested yet. I don't know, informal, I talked about, but let's say a waiver requested is, waiver is requested. I mean, who would go out and, would the road agent go out and make the determination that that has validity and report back to the, the planning board?
He would comment. So yes, and, and that's why the order of the process is important, in my opinion. Because once a completed application is submitted, it starts with a review by department heads, right? And then it's submitted after that completed review, it's submitted to the planning board for review and comment. So presumably if somebody, and, and we have somebody that we know and tell them to get a waiver application. And so they're going to ask for a waiver, they're going to state reasons. Department heads and the road agent, fire chief. Will opine and it's the, if they say the road doesn't need any work and that's why we're asking for a waiver, then the road agent would be expected to go out and look at the road and say, hey, if you were going to spend ten percent on this road, you could vent, this road could benefit by cleaning the ditch line or replacing this culvert. Or the fire chief might say, you know, if they could take a portion of their property and construct a turnaround and that would be a, a benefit to this road. So yeah, hey, the road surface might not need work, but there's things that could be done and for that reason, we don't, we don't recommend that the select board support a waiver. And so that would be in the comments that the planning board also would. The planning board similarly could look at it and come up with their own opinions or perspectives. Say, yes, the road, seen the comments, the road looks good. Uh, but you know, on X and XY road, the the town suggested taking down trees as a way and you know, there's a problem tree there and maybe they don't spend the full ten percent, but they should take a couple of trees down and expand the road. And then with those comments, it would go to the select board for a final decision. Select board would be tasked with, if it was a waiver request, granting a waiver, a partial waiver and incorporating any of the comments from department heads of the planning board that they wanted to, rendering a final decision.
Well, basically my question is, it, it seems like, given the process you just described, that it's premature for us to make, to make a decision because they've, they've got to decide, do they want a waiver or not? Uh, what are they going to put on their application with the select board? The department heads get to look at that and render an opinion of their own prior to it coming to the planning board. It just seems like it's premature.
And that's, that's what happened with the Gillette Road uh, application that you heard three ago. Uh, and it happened in an abbreviated format, uh, because again, it was kind of in between and I think we knew that the planning board was going to consider that. Uh, but what I'm hearing you say is you don't feel like you have enough to prepare a recommendation on because you don't know what they're asking for.
I think Gillette Road was self fulfilling in the sense that we had a letter written from them saying, yes, I fully support the idea that I will contribute ten percent to the road and here's how we're going to do.
Get in writing, they were okay with ten percent. Nothing in writing asking for a waiver.
Right.
This is, this is, this is a big difference between the two.
Right, I do too. Yeah, it mean, they, the first person was willing to make a commitment to follow the process and invest in, in the road.
In right.
In this particular case, we assume based on this conversation, although we don't have confirmation from Mr. and Mrs. Friedman, that it is not there. That, so they're going to have to ask for a waiver, which is going to have to be weighed in on by the department heads prior to becoming.
Because this is kind of new and they're stuck halfway in between, would you be willing to talk to them to have them say they want a waiver and then put it in writing to go along with it? So this could be moved forward or do you want to wait to have the actual written waiver request?
I, I think it's tough for us to do that because we would want to have comment from the department heads. Prior to us making a decision.
Okay, because on the last one, you had that comment back from Mark, so you felt more comfortable because you had the.
Well, that and the commitment from.
On the commitment to spend the. This case to prove a waiver, we don't know the, we don't know the justification or what the fireheads think. It's.
Right.
It's not, it's not.
You want the department heads' comments before you make any decisions? I just want to make that clear.
Well, it's going to be interesting too, because we have no experience of this, how the select board is going to, to evaluate and respond. On a waiver request, because I, I mean, you know, and it depends, and in this particular case, it could boil down to cost, you know? Are, the people are saying, we want, we want a waiver, uh, and we don't, you know, what's the justification for not doing it? You, you, you know, the, the policy says because it's of no real benefit. Well, that's a matter of opinion of the department heads and other people. And, you know, so I, I feel like it's premature.
I think, I think too, it's a new policy and they're kind of caught up between, but to put the first ones through kind of half baked is not the way to start the process. You want to do the first ones well, so we get the process set and we move forward the right way. So I know that they're kind of in between, but I think, you know, doing it halfway, the first one is not the way to do it.
And I, yeah, without getting the information for us, I don't feel like we have sufficient information to render a decision one way or the other.
Yeah, so I was recently communicating with an applicant that he is, that intends to submit a waiver, that intends to submit a full waiver. What I told them, it's spelled out in the policy, that two weeks prior to the next planning board meeting, it's at April fifth, uh, they should submit a full application. So there's a week timeline for the content, those comments that need to be filed, that the planning board, he, before your meeting.
You can talk to somebody else.
And, and have that, at that meeting, consider the specific due date. So John and I could work with the, the Friedman's to work in a similar timeframe.
I think that's what.
Because you wouldn't be having information in time for that.
The deadline will be today.
Yeah.
Right, so we're talking about these going through April fifth.
Okay.
And it'd be the middle of April. All right, I make a motion to move uh, items number seven and eight on our other business uh, table that until eighty.
Second.
Right motion by Jeff and second by Ron Allard. Uh, roll call vote. Andrew Napp?
Hi.
Ron Allen?
G.
Hi.
Steve Diamond?
I'm a die.
Uh, Jeff, ran I. Okay.
So if you, you guys reach out to me and we'll try to set up a, an appointment to where you can meet with me and Connor together, um, so that we can make sure that, what to make sure all this clients, so that when it comes to the planning board, we got everything we need.
And, and, and please understand and, I mean, we're not trying to hold things up. We'd love to get these off the agenda. This is, this is getting, we keep seeing it over and over again. It's just, it's a new process. We're as unsure as everyone else.
We're for the something.
Are you, are you sure?
Yeah. I'm for the some people somewhere in town that we know more than them.
The board collectively, I would agree. Not sure individually that's true. So do you need a second to your motion? As you said, you moved to mo, you moved to push these. We already voted. I, I made the motion.
It got, it got in late.
I am like, apparently then I've just, yeah. I know, trying to make logic out of what Ron was saying.
Oh, I heard something about my.
That can disturb you psychologically. Yeah, okay, well, if there, if there's no other, if there's no other. Uh, the next meeting of uh, of the planning board uh, will be March uh, the fifteenth, fifteenth, all right? And be here at this location. So uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I second, so motion. And Jeff ran to adjourn.
G I.
Ron Allen?
Allen, definitely I.
Steve Diamond?
Hi.
Andy Napp?
Napp I.
Jeffrey and I. Okay, meeting adjourned.